Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Sin, Commissioner Nacita, Commissioner Mom, Mayor Neely.
Here.
Please all join us in the face of... I applaud your commitment to the District of Ohio, of the United States of America, and to the recovery of what was at stake, when taken from our own hands, and to deliver the aid that is for all.
The next thing we have are ceremonies for our commissions and presentations. We actually have four items under this. We begin with a presentation from Concordia University. And if you could introduce yourselves, sir.
I'm Mayor Stephen Braun of Concordia University.
And I'm Madeline Turnock, Director of Marketing, Communications from Concordia University.
Thank you.
So, thank you for having us here today. We are grateful to be here and we appreciate Oregon City and everything about it. We actually have many students at Concordia that are, that have taken classes at Clarkmoss Community College. And to be exact, this semester, we have about seventy-nine students who are currently at Concordia who have taken courses here in their community and, and in ours. And I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of background. First, why are we here? And then who are, who's Concordia University? And, and what discussions have happened so far? And then what we might do to collaborate, communicate, partner together, and for the good of Oregon City. So, just by way of background, there are some possible opportunities to collaborate. What we've heard and listened in, in more than a dozen or two dozen meetings is that there is an opportunity for new jobs, sustainable economic models that would help revitalize downtown and create and continue to grow Oregon City as really a regional hub of the ninety-nine E from Milwaukee to Candy. So, we wanted to just share a little bit about Concordia and how we might join you in accomplishing some of those needs that we heard in the community and opportunities that we heard. So, a little bit about Concordia. We are located in northeast Portland on twenty-four acres. By the numbers, we have about twenty-five-hundred students, equally split undergraduate and graduate students. Our student, our faculty, student to faculty ratio is seventeen to one, and our class size is about twenty. And about ninety-eight percent of our students receive some form of tuition assistance. So, we, we are committed to making sure students get an opportunity to go to college and to pursue higher ed degrees. One thing, I should let you know, one thing we are not, we are not an ivory tower. We are not steeped in bureaucracy. We are not slow to move or make decisions or partner with communities who are interested in really improvement and growth, job growth and academic growth. So, I just wanted to kind of share that with you because I think there are sometimes protection of universities that's slow to move, but we are not one of those. We have many academic areas that are not overlapping, but we see it as complementary to Clarkmoss Community College. In no way do we see that, that we would replace or in any way take any students away. Rather, they would have continued opportunity for higher ed. So, some of those academic areas include our School of Management, so our business degrees, including an MBA degree. We have several teaching degrees, a Master of Education, a Master in Teaching. We have an undergraduate degrees as well. We have healthcare degrees, including nursing degrees. And we take, we're among private universities in Oregon. We take more transfer students than any other private university in Oregon. And a bit about why, if we did find opportunities to collaborate for students in this community, a little bit about why. Our mission is to prepare leaders for the transformation of society. And so, part of our vision 2020 that our Board of Directors has recently adopted is really to commit to a community engagement strategy. If it's good for the community in which we serve, then we are a likely partner to help. And, and one of those ways in which we do that is service. Service is very important to our students and our faculty, and it's woven into our curriculum. That is, you know, some outcomes of that is that we're now in a third consecutive year on the US President's Community Service Honor Roll. And we just last, late last year, were recognized number one in service in the nation by the national publication, Washington Monthly. So, we are not only committed to service, but it really weaves through our curriculum and who we are. Just to give you a picture of the discussions that have taken place to date with members of this community and Concordia, we have had more than two dozen meetings. And these are just a few of those meetings between parties on both Concordia's campus and here in Oregon City. So, why are we here? Really, we think that there are, based on the opportunities here, based on needs in the community, and based on what Concordia provides students, we feel that there is an opportunity perhaps to serve as a catalyst for job growth and for new sustainable job growth in Oregon City. And so, just to kind of give a little bit more detail in that department, Steve Braun, our Dean of our School of Management, and Bill Need, a Professor of Marketing at School of Management at Concordia are here to kind of share a little bit more.
Madal. Oh, we'll talk a little bit about Rapid Business Prototyping Center, which is a new concept, fairly new, fairly cutting-edge. You'll get to look at a diagram that'll more clearly explain all that. But I want to talk a little bit about what we think this will serve. In terms of community economic development, this would obviously serve not only Oregon City, but the, here in the metro area that you've been assigned around this region. So, I'm thinking from Candy to Milwaukee, for example. We'd be collaborating in community education, which would mean not only Clarkmoss and Portland Community College, and we also have a relationship with them because they're proximity to us, but also, I'm assuming, that would include small business development centers in North Clarkmoss, as well as the high school, specialized high schools, as well as the usual high schools in Oregon City, Candy, et cetera. So, we'd also be dealing with businesses and entrepreneurs in that regard. An example of what we would, we had some experience with, Bill has had some experience with a emergency room doctor, who has, who felt that a problem that he always encountered as a rural physician was that he could never do a tracheoscope with, with his patients because it was too expensive and required a thirty-thousand-dollar monitor. But through this rapid prototyping model, it was envisioned that he could actually create an iPhone application to attach to his scope. And for that, he could get adequate definition on that screen to be able to examine that person for considerably less cost. So, we're talking really about highly leveraged economic equations here. We're talking about things that are disruptive in terms of, good disruptive in terms of the service. We'd be talking also about, in terms of our service, we'd be talking about our Bachelor of Business Administration undergraduate degrees with Business and Marketing, a two-plus-two program with Clarkmoss Community College and a number of its departments. And we would envision that would lead them to either Bachelor of Science or Bachelor of Arts degrees in business. We also want to talk and engage the high school science teachers and their students, as well as the Future Business Leaders of America and the Deca Marketing students. So, there's quite, I think we did a survey, a free survey, on quite a few students that would be engaged here. When I, when we talked to the principal at Saban Schellenberger, for example, she indicated there were thirty-three-hundred students in the district came to that facility alone. And we've also had some discussions with Clarkmoss Academy of Industrial Sciences, but we've not met them. So, the last piece would be regarding MBA students. We would envision our MBAs, we do have a specialization now in China, and we're anticipating a specialization in healthcare as well. So, that would, that would come through for us in terms of how we might be a catalyst here. Next slide, talk a little bit about business prototyping jobs. This is pretty simplified, but suffice it to say that our rapid prototyping business curriculum has three components. It has an entrepreneurship component, it has an innovation component, it has a design component. The area of entrepreneurship has to do with generating business models, business plans with complete financials and financing the enterprise. The area of innovation are actually twelve types of innovation. Everything from disruptive, which I just mentioned, to product innovation, to marketing and, and application innovation. Twelve different types are all presented in a, a model by Jeffrey Moore. Innovation marketing relates to hypothesizing customer needs and then testing them. And testing the customer's antithetical needs. The last piece of that, the design piece, is an interesting way of looking at, design thinking is an interesting way of looking at a funnel of business opportunities and problems, and how it chows itself down with various rules of thumb, with various hypotheses, and ultimately down to a solution. So, the design works in a way that one would say we went over the innovations from the inventions, and that our design mode also anticipates that we will work with industrial designers. One of the more famous ones you may have heard of, Apple's Jonathan Ives is a very famous designer, and he's Steve Jobs' right-hand person. So, this then would, the innovation leads to a competitive advantage for your local business. That in turn leads to a sustainable or promising company that will then in turn drive business growth and we hope ultimately job growth. That's how the equation works to us. So, if I like to turn over to Bill, we'll talk about how promising startups create jobs.
Ask questions if you have any.
Right. Actually, I did have one, I don't, I don't wear a jacket program, so you have the ID. Future Business Leaders of America.
Click four H close to capitals. Okay, here's a model called, a category lifecycle. It's a model by Jeffrey Moore. And Jeffrey Moore is sort of the guru of high-tech marketing in Silicon Valley. And he started in the mid-eighties, and since then, he's really become chief consultant at Sisto Systems. And Sisto Systems has businesses in A, B, C, D, and E. They go through businesses very quickly. And so, he has evolved a theory of how to manage across an entire spectrum of different kinds of businesses. The employment, usually on the Y-axis, you see profit or sales, but for our purposes, we're interested in employment. The big idea that we're focusing on is regions A and B. All right, conventional approaches, assume you're in a regency and mature market, let's do surveys, focus groups, and advertise, surveys, focus group, and advertise. What we want to do is, is zero and write on developing business models so that we can get students starting up businesses while they're in the business school at Concordia. How are we going to do that? That's what this slide is about. Step one, the EID Entrepreneurship Innovation and Design that Steve just talked about, that goes through the curriculum so that they can actually come up with a hypothetical plan to do a product for a market. Then they go to step two, build a prototype. They build a prototype. If we can rake any intellectual property off of that, we do. I used to be the IP manager for HP's Laser Vet Group, and so this is something we get for free with my background. Step three, customer demand testing. You have students now with a prototype that they can take out to real customers. Can they sell it? You can't sell it, you don't got a customer. And then, if you don't got a customer, you pivot. You go right back to EID, step number one, throw out that business plan and evolve it to a new one. You know, figure out you're in a dead-end canyon as soon as possible, and before you hire salespeople, before you vet any money, you get a business model. That's what all five steps of this do, okay? Once you've got a product that you can sell, then can you get it into a channel? We've got a shopping cart on there to represent. We're going to put up a web store so that students can start selling immediately. All the infrastructure will be taken care of for them. Can you sell this prototype to people over the internet? Can you get out in channels and, and go to companies? If you have a direct model, if the product fits a direct model, can you go to companies and sell it? And so, they keep pivoting until they get a business model at step five, they can repeatedly sell somehow. And once they have a business model they know can repeatedly sell, then you can feed them into the traditional SBDC people, the Small Business Development people. The, this, try, try again, try again, try again. You have a company that succeeds, pivots five times. So, this is the, the very low-cost, high-speed way to get people producing revenue that's repeatable. Okay? And, and that's our big idea.
I might, I might just look back, but what this really represents, I know it's a little convoluted there, but if you live with it a little bit, it begins to make some sense. But the other thing I wanted to make sure you understood, all we have here is a bumper-to-bumper solution. So, we're going to start with the curriculum, we're going to go through the lab, we're going to develop the product, we're going to test it, we're going to generate a new business model. Once we've got escape velocity obtained, then we will also be in a position to help that student develop his or her own traditional business plan. And, and also have access to financing opportunities with angel investors and people like that. And we'll also be able to help them file a patent application, should that become feasible, so that they've got some more capital value locked right up in that company as we start.
Now, if you have any questions?
I actually do, because this is, this is fascinating to me. And since I've heard about the prototype lab, Bill, I, I, since I deal with, you know, city building and stuff like that, I wanted to, if, if either you as business school people, one of the famous urban planners, Jane Jacobs, was also an economist and wrote a number of books on economics, and you're probably familiar with her theory of import substitution, about how a city economy builds itself by identifying products that it has to bring in from somewhere else and figuring out a way to make it locally, so they don't have to bring in something from Wisconsin or China. They can just make it locally. And it almost seems like that prototype lab can be a tool for trying to figure out how to develop a real local economy by, you know, identifying what you're importing from far away and, you know, how to, in a high-tech manner, manufacture or develop, you know, an alternative made locally and, and manufactured and sell it locally.
Yeah, the IP manager at HP, HP went from eighteenth in the US Patenting to third, undermined enthusiasm, because it was mostly enthusiasm in building systems. And what I, what I figured out very early, I've run over two-hundred invention workshops with inventors to write down the seeds of a patent application. Because there's more, there are more ideas than you need. You don't need to go anywhere else to get ideas to make Oregon City a super dynamic cover of the business magazines, cover of whatever magazine you want to be on. The ideas are all here. The problem is getting them out of people's heads, getting them into a commercially viable form, and then leveraging them. And then the hard part is, you know, getting people to step up with their ideas, because we're so busy getting the wrong answers in school all the time, that it's hard to learn a winner when you see one. And there are more inventions on the ground, I already know. You know, when I run a workshop, I go in believing I've got inventors, and I walk out with the proof. Sometimes you just got to believe in order to see. And through this process, the beauty of it is, A, it works. Fab labs have been built around the world, and what happens is, you put a fab lab in, and then businesses start growing around it. But there's already hundreds of proof cases of this, and in all cultures. There's, there's no reason to think you can't do it in Oregon City.
What's the institutional structure that you need to develop one of those labs? Is it, it doesn't seem to me like the city of Oregon City government is some, is, is, would be a sponsor of this. Would this be through a partnership with Clarkmoss Community College, for example? How would, would this be something you just set up with local business people? How, how, how would you go about setting that?
There are a lot of ways you could do it. Did your bond issue pass yet?
It actually failed. It failed yesterday.
Okay, well then, we want to do one of these on our school. We want to bolt it right into the business school and then focus our curriculum on it so that we can have seniors, in their senior year, what they do is start a business and, and start building it. The, you know, where the fab lab isn't, isn't really even that important, is having this business prototype and curriculum on a fast track focused on people with real tight feedback. I mean, think about it, you've got a prototype, you know, you've done step one and step two, you've got a prototype in your hands, now what do you do? Well, you have to pick up the phone and call somebody and see if you can get an appointment, see if you can sell them. Well, there's a million reasons not to pick that phone up, but if you put a professor on the back of the student and say, "Look, by Tuesday, I want ten phone calls. I want trip reports from phone calls." You know, tell me who you're calling. Well, I, you know, that whole per analysis is just going to not be in the picture, because there's no time to wait for the perfect conditions. There's just no time. We've got to make this happen.
Some of the capability that we need for the lab rests here on Clarkmoss Community College's industrial design area, where Bob Delgado works in his chair, in terms of the CAD and Autodesk modeling systems. They also teach those courses. Those are all, I mean, that'll, that can start it right here, and we will just integrate that into the curriculum.
So, that doesn't, you're talking about stuff that the college has existing on their campus now?
Right. All of these are the wrong areas here.
Okay. So, that, so it doesn't depend on the passage of the bond?
No.
You know, I don't think that the fact that the bond didn't pass is, is more of a reason to want to build relationships with a school at Concordia, because, I mean, your, your service reputation and, you know, mode of operation, we are a community that really needs, you know, that kind of help. You know, just, you don't have to look farther than the Blue Hare enclosure to figure out, you know, the degree, the degree to which this community is in need of fostering relationships that will plant the seeds of economic development and economic growth. And so, I'm very hopeful that both the city and the college can, can, you know, continue these conversations with you and, and...
So, can I speak to what catalysts is?
Yeah, definitely.
Catalysts are using chemistry, and what catalysts do is they allow chemical reactions to happen much quicker and at much lower energy. And we see ourselves as a catalyst of the pieces that are already on the ground here. It's like when I was at HP, I was a catalyst to inventing. All the pieces were there. All it needed was organization and enthusiasm. And we've got almost everything we need right now. You know, at, at Concordia, we have our twenty-three point nine acres. What we don't have is space, but you guys got space. And if we can get a common vision, you know, we could have good problems, like students are making obscene profits more than their professors make. What are we going to do about that? The professor's office needs new furniture, you know, and, but, you know, we can create a whole host of new good problems by combining the resources we have and aligning them.
When you say space, I mean, square footage-wise, what do you, wouldn't...
Twenty-five-hundred square feet of space that's heated and cooled would be a godsend to us right now.
Twenty-five-hundred?
Mm-hmm.
It's not, oh...
You can have my house.
Yeah, it's not that much more than we have. The rapid prototyping equipment, you can buy a tabletop unit that would fit here that would get the students going for not that much money. They are coming down in order of magnitude every ten years. And, you know, it used to be, it was a twenty-million-dollar grant that started this, and now it's down, you know, into hundreds of thousands and, and less all the time.
I have some comments. First, when Bill says enthusiasm, Dr. Need says enthusiasm, I want to thank him for, he has enthusiasm, believe me. We've seen that in other meetings. He's toned it way down tonight. And that's a good thing. But I really want to thank you guys for coming and doing the presentation and, and giving this excitement in our community. And just as I was looking through the audience here at people, I was thinking about inventors in the community. I was seeing Ginger, Steven Dindorff, Bill Roperock, Dan Fowler. I mean, we've got people here that constantly have ideas flowing through their brains and are constantly coming up with things. And these are the kind of people that could really benefit from something like this, a concept fab lab to have some place to do those things. One of the things that I have not been able to call Madeline about yet, but I've talked to some other people, is starting a group called Friends of Concordia, to see what we can do to facilitate, you know, getting this off the ground and getting it moving more quickly. And if anybody would like to contact me, you can do it at miss email, and I would be really happy to facilitate that getting it together.
Hey, boys, here's one more slide.
So, what are the moving parts? That's what this slide is about. The moving parts are in the white blue on the right. And the moving parts are the entrepreneurship curriculum and the program focused on it. We're working that, putting a fab lab in. We're going to, we're really leaning towards doing business model boot camps, where we bring students to campus where they can make a product and put it up on the net and start trying to sell it immediately while they're in high school. So, that's got the web sales as another component. IP management is another component. We can run invention workshops, you know, at any time. I have developed curriculum for that. We could run it down here in Oregon City and start bringing the inventors out of the woodwork and start forming them into a community, because this is, this is a natural, community-based thing. There's a rapid prototyping community that, that exists already in this area. Immediately, it's confined silos, silo of manufacturing or the silo of engineering in whatever institution it's in. But we can break, you know, we've got lots of intellectual plastic explosive to break through the walls of the silos and, and get people talking and get things moving. On the left-hand side, these are all the people that are interested in supporting us, that are interested in partnering with us. And it's kind of a spectrum of people you don't see, but that's the fruit of being catalysts. The, when you work in a cutting-edge area and cutting-edge practical area like this, there's enormous energy waiting to be passed. It was, inventing was like the same here when I was there, and these fab labs are coming. We already have the curriculum in the high schools. We can start enabling that.
Do you have the Angel Network behind this?
Right. We have two of our adjunct faculty members who teach in entrepreneurial financing, of course, are, one is the chair and the other is the manager.
Great.
Just out of curiosity, what role is the Multnomah Barrow Foundation playing?
We're hoping that they are willing to help us create a first virtual property around the first student, or hoping it's a high school student, and to get a patent application going.
Good. Just, we've been mentioning the college a lot, but since you're talking about high school students, is there, is there an area of interaction possibly with the Oregon City's public schools too?
Absolutely, yes. We just had a chance to meet.
I'd be interested case, case, practice. That's an Oregon City high school alternative school within the high school campus.
Clear. Are listeners, anybody not, is my end question? Sure.
And one, yeah. If you only need twenty-five large square feet of stuff, I mean, we're getting here right now. I mean, I, my community neighbors, I mean, Al seven, property in Oregon City, living two or three a week, probably all upset.
See? Well, I don't know about the zone.
It has to be manufacturing, I think, because of the nature of the equipment, it has to be exhausted, things like that.
The reason we're favorites, we need Eric Goff out of the building. He doesn't have to...
Um, it doesn't have impurities, but it has, you know, like, it's, it's not much more than a dryer. But if I don't get it, the most cost of your body here.
You can't hear me?
Yes.
So, um, the, there are some, um, manufacturing requirements like exhaust on, um, the laser engravers is, um, to me, it looks like a dryer venting system, just to get the fumes outside. It's, um, what you're doing is you've got an iPad, you've got a laser, you etch through the color coating on the iPad. It's, it's not a high watt laser, it's...
Except, so that's what's been asked, what class laser?
High, well, it's 30 watts is more than enough. 50 watts would be fantastic.
Do our NUD and MUC zones permit that?
I believe it would have to be one of our guest rooms. Is it a wall plug, do you think, or is it hard wired?
I believe they're wall plug.
It's in there, okay.
It's 20 minutes plenty for the same, even for the additive manufacturing equipment.
So, you have to rent dollars? Oh.
Well, often we don't have any money to rent it, um, yet. So, the space isn't, isn't the problem per se, but, um, we've got to get it up so it's sustainable.
And then, oh, they have another question.
Well, I guess, so, any standard built-up industrial art like red soils would suit your needs?
Yeah, I would assume it would be more than enough.
You have to put...
God balls in the details.
Kind of urban and all that sort of...
Right, exactly. Sure, question, crazy place.
People are putting ones up in schools all the time, so...
And part of the, the thing I think that we need to really make clear, and I, I think you did a good job, is that this does not detract anything from Clackamas Community College. The students at Clackamas go through Clackamas and get their graduation certificate from Clackamas. And then they're, when they're admitted to Clackamas, they're also, we go through an admission process that admits them to Concordia at the same time, correct?
Yeah.
And so then they would go on from Clackamas and finish at Concordia with their bachelor's in science degree.
Right, that's good.
And I can just clarify a little bit there. Um, it's a hybrid program that's, uh, functions at like a two plus two. So, two years at Clackamas Community College, all right, two years at Concordia. Given that the right agreements take place between the two colleges can then, um, you know, help students quickly and easily and smoothly transition through all the way to their, um, finished bachelor's degree.
Thank you so much for the...
Thanks, yeah. Quite amazing. Thank you guys very much. I mentioned Danny Sackland, anyway, he's a, one of the executive staff of I think Concordia Two came down.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Um, we have, um, two away from citizens' commons. We have the destroyed review board presentation, preservation, nothing. It'd be, Christina, I believe.
Well, Susan, we're glad that from the innovator to...
You're always going to be asking, um, I am true. Let me get this, um... There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, remember I was here at our last meeting to... I was here at our last meeting to award, um, the preservation award, uh, to celebrate Preservation Month, which, uh, in the proclamation was read by Mayor Neely. And the National Trust for Historic Preservation partners with local governments every year for Preservation Month, where we take the time to celebrate our historic resources and provide education. And one thing I'd like to do tonight is to provide some of the information the National Trust is doing, but their new initiative on historic preservation is sustainability. Trying to educate the public that maintaining our historic resources is one of the most sustainable things we can do. And there are a lot of myths out there about repair and maintenance of historic windows, especially to vinyl replacements. So, I have a quick, um, presentation tonight and a lot of the information I'm providing came from the National Trust website. And that is www.preservationnation.org. And on your agenda, there's also a fact sheet PDF I provided, which has a lot of this information. And on their website, they have a great amount of advocacy and information on how to weatherize your historic homes without affecting the historic integrity, because you can do both. You can protect, um, and help, uh, the energy efficiency without, um, sacrificing, uh, your beautiful historic wood windows. So this is a great quote we used last week, but I wanted to say it again, because I think this really comes to, uh, the, the heart of the matter. "Preserving and repurposing our buildings is one of the greenest things the community can do. Containing use of our existing buildings reduces the amount of demolition and construction waste deposited in landfills, lessens unnecessary demand for energy and other natural resources and concerns embodied energy with the amount of energy that was originally used to create the excellent structures." And that's what I often tell people, the greenest window is the one that is most likely already on your house. There probably isn't a greener window you can put in your house, um, other than keeping the one that's there. And there's one that's, uh, that a lot of people forget. One, that old windows are built with high-quality material. You can't get any better than dense, 100-year-old old-growth windows. Uh, windows fit their openings, um, they've aged over time. Those windows, um, have expanded and contracted over the years. And that, that specific window fits that specific opening. And so if properly weather stripped, it will do a good job. If you take a new replacement window, even a new wood replacement window, you're not going to quite fit that original opening and you're ended overcompensating by having larger weather stripping or even reducing the size of the window to make it fit. Old windows can be repaired. Um, unlike new vinyl windows and even aluminum windows, you can take out specific parts of a historic window, be a sash, I'm not in a railing, replace that part and reuse the existing window. With a vinyl window, the moment a window seal cracks or something is wrong, you have to tear out the whole window system and put a whole new window in. You can't repair vinyl windows, you have to replace them if they break or crack. And old windows perform well and are energy efficient. Studies are out that show that in a historic old-growth wood window with a proper weather stripping and a storm window provides the same and even better than a new double-pane wood or vinyl window. So, kind of the window salesperson, uh, the National Trust has now been doing studies to hand back to those window salespeople and say, no, actually, uh, your historic windows can provide the same amount of energy efficiency as a new window. And if you want more information on some of those studies, you can get them on the Preservation Nation, uh, website. Some old window myths I'd like to tear down this evening. Uh, number one, replacement windows will save you money. Um, actually, it takes about 40 years to begin to recoup the energy savings on the amount you spent on those new windows. You know, I have a nice little, um, spiel on this I'd like to read, which has some good numbers. On average, replacing windows with new higher-quality replacement windows, even when properly installed, can save you about $50 a month on your heating or cooling bills. However, this is after spending an average of $12,000 to install the windows. The average number is about 24 to 30 windows, replaced at an average of $500 to $1,000 each. If you heat your house an average of six months a year, the savings are about $300 a year. This rate would take 40 years to even begin to recoup the energy savings that are spent on the new windows, let alone the amount of energy it took to make the new windows. Lesson two, replacement windows are guaranteed. And next to bottom, read the fine print. Uh, this is what a lot of people forget, is that that guarantee comes with a lot of asterisks and, uh, um, fine print. When your replacement windows come with a lifetime warranty, again, take the time to read the fine print. Even the better quality replacement windows limit the lifetime warranty on the glass to 20 years, installation to two years, and non-glass components to 10 years. Notice that the lifetime better describes the lifetime of the product, not your lifetime or the lifetime of your home. Any review is the fine print that describes what was not covered by the limited warranty. Also notice that the warranties are only good if the company that issued is still in business when you have new windows replaced. Note all warrant, not all warranties are transferable or only transferable with a certain amount of time. And also transferable, not transferable to the new homeowner if you sell your house. So, uh, the replacement windows are guaranteed is usually a falsehood and oftentimes they have a max of $500. So if you spent $12,000, guarantee is not going to repay your investment. Lesson three, replacement windows are maintenance-free. Well, they are maintenance-free because you can't replace a part, you have to actually replace the whole window. And, uh, a lot of these vinyl windows, uh, don't have a lifespan, or even new wood windows don't have a lifespan of more than 20 years. Whereas your historic old-growth wood windows are often more than 100 years old and in good condition today. So they most, most likely will last at least a minimum of 20 to 40 more years. Replacement windows are environmentally responsible choice. Green is more than just energy performance. To determine real and environmental impacts, one must take into account the embodied energy of the new and existing windows. So a lot of people talk about how you can be green and save energy by replacing your wood windows with new vinyl windows. And I think this is one of the big myths to let people know about is keeping your, your historic windows with storm windows is probably the most environmentally responsible choice you can do as a, as a homeowner. So these are the questions I've seen the county plan against the restoration of original windows. How do I know if I should replace or rehabilitate my windows? This is a question that many owners of older homes face. Something to keep in mind, not everything you read about replacement windows is true. Does energy efficiency trump preservation? No, they are not mutually exclusive. Um, I put a picture of the, uh, McLaughlin House, because I think that's what people see is these, these extreme cases. Well, you know, you either have to keep it exactly 100% secure or you'll lose all your heat. Uh, and they really are not. You can, by maintaining your historic materials, you are being, um, you know, stewards to the environment. We've talked about the replacement costs of windows and a lot of these people forget not only replacement costs of the new window, but the energy savings just isn't there and you are not recouping it. Especially if you put that, uh, the new, uh, windows on your credit card, you have to remember that cost too. Uh, they call them replacement windows for a reason, and I really like this photo, because what you lose from your original wood windows is really invaluable and, and speaking in a way, really takes away what makes your historic building so significant.
Is that in Oregon too?
No, it's listed on the National Trust website, but I didn't like this photo. Because it really shows that, um, you know...
We just piled it over it.
Yeah. Hopefully not, not so. And those, those are windows would be, they're not going to last more than 20 years. And so not only have you significantly altered what the house looks like, you're going to be putting a new window in, in, in a, in a generation. These windows are often presented as options for weatherizing. Will installing those really help control the energy loss issues? Yes, they will. You've got two types of storm windows. You can do interior storm windows. And some people really like them, especially if you lived on a, a multiple-story house and don't want to go up on a ladder. You can take those, um, out in the summertime. And, um, in Oregon, not many people open their windows a lot in the wintertime. So I know a lot of people put the storm windows in October, take them out in April, and they kind of do their job. Um, you can replace them in the summer with an interior screen. But one thing, um, that interior storm windows don't do is they don't protect the exterior of the windows from rain and sleet and weather. So that's one nice thing about exterior storm windows, is it can really preserve the exterior and you don't have to do as much kind of yearly painting of the windows. Uh, now, exterior storm windows, uh, can be done with aluminum, the wood. Uh, one thing I'd like to have, and I have the link up there for interior storm windows, there's a great gentleman in the Midwest who's come up with a DIY for interior storm windows that any property owner can do, which is pretty much taking, um, some wood from Home Depot, some shrink-wrapped plastic, putting that around the wood, measuring out each of your windows. Uh, you can do it all for a couple hundred dollars and keep them in the basement every year. And every, um, every window, put them in the interior windows and the energy saving is pretty dramatic. And even a home, any homeowner can do it. If they just kind of took them a weekend, they could make, um, interior storm windows for all their windows.
Well, are, uh, are there any restrictions on storm window material?
Nope. Interior, absolutely no. Um, and exterior, we do have, if you're a designated home, we do have it. But for the most part, we see, um, almost any storm window as a way to save your historic windows. For the most part, they are a staff of people.
Okay.
Uh, I understand that my home's original windows tend to should be restored, but where do I find somebody? People often ask. Um, some people find it difficult, um, to find who is specialized in historic wood windows. And what we've done over the last couple of years, along with the Architectural Heritage Center and site-side preservation, the directory.com, is to compile lists of contractors and professionals that work in window restoration and repair. On our website, we have two documents under, um, our historic section of our website. Uh, we have a resource directory that we utilize information from the Architectural Heritage Center. We also have a local repair specialist for window repair. And you can get both of those documents on our website under our historic information tab. And you can see here on our website, under historic information, we also have a window repair page where a lot of links on DIY window repair, the contractor list is there, lots of information on everything you probably ever wanted to know about historic wood windows and afraid to ask, we have it there. We also have a preservation grant program, uh, for historically designated properties. They can request grant money to help pay for window repairs, storm windows, placement of nonhistoric windows. And we also do siding and, uh, prep porch repair. Uh, and this has been a very successful program. And we've actually even had people volunteer to locally designate their houses, um, for local review in order to be, take advantage of this program. So it's a pretty vital program and from, I'm excited because it'll give you carrot and a recognition for historic property owners.
What is it, I meant to...
It's a 50% matching grant for the first 2,000 and a 25% matching grant for a total of $3,000. And you can take advantage in multiple phases, but the historic review board does not give out more than $3,000 per person every few years. So we've had some people come in for two hundred-dollar grants. And they, and it's easy as somebody come in and help you, um, rip off all the windows that were painted shut and rehanging sash cords. And something as simple as that to pay for, um, the replacement of a window that, with a new wood window where it truly has almost been crumbling from dry rot. Or replace a, a lower sash of a window that has had some dry rot, but the other three parts of the sash still are in good condition. So we kind of run the gamut of what people come in for.
Some years ago, there was a grant program administered by the county. You saved on enough money to your, uh, uh, not value of your house, I mean, your house. Uh, it was only just a 3% increase a year or something like that, in terms of paying it back. Just didn't have to do, didn't have to do it until they sold the property. Those monies, as they, as they come back in, are they committed to go back into historic preservation?
Well, that program doesn't exist anymore.
But, but the money is still coming out of payments of people that are paying back their monies to the county.
You know, fortunately, I, I have not been involved in that program. It wasn't, I think it was closed when I came here, so I have not been involved.
Well, I'm wondering, uh, if there were, I thought it was a community block, I, I don't know, I don't know. Uh, good to know from Ann Fowler. I'm wondering if there were restrictions on those monies being used that require the money being paid out on the links that were essentially taken to go back into historic preservation.
I can check, um, if you move us a county program, so I can check and see how we can get involved with that. Definitely, I'll, I'll get, I'll get back to, uh, Mr. Uncle Nick and let you know. So this is my contact information. I am the preservation planner for Oregon City. And I do help historic property owners with their wood window questions, but also people who may not have a historic house but just have an interest in maintaining their wood windows. I'm also good contact and can get people involved and connected to the resources they need. So if you have any questions?
Yes, yeah, that was so compelling. I'm all straight to ask my neighbor to keep his 64 Plymouth and forego the Prius, as long as he puts storm windows in it. So, really good, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Any questions with Christina? Thank you. And now we have Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Report to the City Commission.
You're introducing those...
I will give you a brief introduction. Uh, Mayor Commissioners, um, this is Brian Watt. He's the current chair of the Parks Recreation Committee. And, uh, I think we used to, I think the Parks Committee used to bring sort of a report annually a few years back. And then somewhere along the way, we kind of stopped, for whatever reason, we stopped doing that. And, uh, the committee recently has been talking about it, it would be a good time to do that again. So, uh, Mr. Watt is here to... So, um, Mr. Watt is here to give you kind of an update and a rundown on what's going on with the parks and recreation committee. And I'd also just like to, um, I'd like to thank Brian for his service. He's been on the, the committee now for, I think, about three years.
Yeah.
Something like that, um, but, uh, we have a, we have a really, really good and a really active park and recreation advisory committee. We, um, not to, not to say that we haven't in the past, but, um, we have for the first time in, as long as I've been with the city for going, and what is going on close to seven years, a full committee of nine members, which is, really says a lot about the interest there. Also says a lot about the commission and Nancy Ives, who's done a great job of, of promoting the vacancies on our boards and committees. But anyway, just wanted to note that as well. And, uh, with that, I'll just let Brian, uh, share his report.
Scott, excuse me. Sir, ma'am, good to meet you. I've met you, but I've not met you, ma'am. Good to meet you, Brian Watt, chair of the park and recreation committee. Thank you, Scott, for, uh, the introduction. And I do, uh, really enjoy myself there, uh, on the, on the committee and have for the last couple of years. I think the motto that I've adopted and the rest of the, of the committee has adopted is one of action. I know we're in advisory committee, but it's good to keep the ball rolling and have i- items on the agenda that you know that you've taken responsibility for, advocacy for and, and keep the ball moving. And that's really my, my theme, has been my theme for the last year and a half or so as chair. So, um, Scott, you took some of my introduction, I just sort of didn't skip that. But five, five of, five of the, uh, neighborhood associations, five of the eleven are represented on the, on the committee itself, which is a good thing. And, uh, the mayor's actually been at the last couple, maybe the last three, uh, folks that we've confirmed to the, the committee. So that's been, uh, that's been great to see you there too, mayor, and I appreciate your presence there. Sometime, you know, I like to say now on the dog parks and, and, you know, there's different reactions in the room, but before we get, before we get to dog parks. Some of the accomplishments, and I'll keep it, I'll keep, I'll expedite here and keep it pithy and try to not bore anybody hopefully. Some of the accomplishments of last year, uh, as we look back, there was, there was a lot of them. I think of all the work we did at the pool and I know you've been there, uh, several times and the work we did at the pioneer center, wow. Uh, you know, we, we have seen and moved the ball forward in a lot of areas. Um, the, uh, the, the Canema Park, the neighborhood park, the grant, uh, nearly, or actually over a quarter million dollars that we matched in getting that project, uh, up and going and, uh, hopefully done, done in the fall. That's another, really, I think, a home run. And, uh, purchasing the, uh, both the property in the Canema neighborhood and also Wesley Lynn and moving Wesley Lynn itself forward, uh, into phase two with, uh, with, uh, Britt Tucker and the, uh, construction, uh, class. Wow, at Oregon City, I mean, that's a great relationship that we've developed. And, uh, the metro enhancement grants as well. So seeing the, the structure completed and also the, the new, uh, restroom slash, uh, snack bar facility going up. If you haven't been there lately, it's, it's, it's really going up quick, so it's looking good out there. There's a lot of other things I could talk about as far as accomplishments, but, but now on to dog parks. So we have been talking about dog parks lately and I, and I, I looked at the, I looked at your goals and I definitely see where they, where they, uh, inter, intertwine. And, uh, you'll see it as I go, but dog parks wasn't one of your goals, uh, in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, so.
One of mine.
Okay.
She's only interested in cats.
Well, yeah, I've seen the cat park. They don't always bury it. Okay, upset on that. Okay, again, keeping it pithy, we have, we have been meeting, um, uh, and we talked, discussed several times. I mean, it's, it's been a couple of years since it really came up and the idea has been tossed about here and there, but we've begun to get a little bit serious and that's why I'm talking to you about it. And, uh, we have a couple of the, uh, committee members on the, on the frac that I've assigned to a subcommittee task force working group, um, thing. Like, tell it what you want, that was a kind of a joke, but anyway. And, and they've investigated dog parks in the community, they, they've conducted interviews, they've talked to Scott and Denise and Larry. And just begun, begun looking into it, I, I would say, you know, maybe ten percent, fifteen percent into, uh, the discussion and, and certainly, I don't think into a methodology of discovering where, where we could have it. But looking into ideas where we could have a dog park in Oregon City. And one of the reasons I would bring it to your attention this evening is I didn't want to, we didn't want to, you know, on the committee, uh, use any more staff time than we, than we should or could. Uh, in having, uh, the help of Scott and Denise and Larry, um, work through some of this, uh, so, some of the issues that, uh, that we, that we need to work through in investigating dog parks. To have sort of your tacit approval or at least, uh, you know, get that out to you so that you know that it's, it's in, it's in the works. And, uh, we'd like to go out to the community and see what their reaction to, uh, a dog park might be. And then fo- focus in, or as we focus in on, on, uh, a park or parks, uh, continue to see what the, what the, uh, the advocacy out there is for a dog park. That's about it on that. So anyway, get that out on, on your plate and, uh, and make sure you know that we're talking about that. And by the way, the, the document that I've, I've, I've gotten, I'm going to make available to you all through Scott and also our, our goals as well, the frac goals. As far as the, uh, park maintenance utility fee, we've been talking about that a lot and I understand it's an eighteen month process approximately. And, uh, if, if there's any reason for or, or precedent for having a, a frac member be a part of that methodology process of, uh, uh, you know, or, you know, updates or whatever, whatever may, may seem most logical to, uh, the commission, the mayor. That would be kind of appreciated at least, uh, uh, from our perspective, uh, we'd like to be a part of that. And, uh, we, we see a, a natural, um, linkage, uh, between the park maintenance utility fee and the park, uh, the pocket parks that we have. Uh, the, uh, the initiative that was, that went through Oregon City in early two, in the early two thousand, two, two thousand two, two thousand three, where six pocket parks, approximately six parks were on the, uh, the ballot to dispose or to disperse, uh, failed. And, but I see, we see this, uh, the, the opportunity as we talk about the, uh, the maintenance utility fee and the lack of, uh, you know, a lot of maintenance funds and also, um, full-time equivalent employees on the city staff, which were about up fifty percent of national, national average right now. One, one person or one, uh, staff for seven to ten developed acres is, uh, is what the national average is. And we're about one, uh, of course, for every sixteen or so developed acres. So we're a little bit above fifty percent. And, uh, again, as far as, uh, uh, the, um, the disposal of certain parks, I think a good piece could be made and certainly we could look at the methodology that was used in the last attempt or the last presentation to the public. It was put, I believe, on a ballot measure, uh, to dispose of or to, to, uh, disperse this property or certain properties, uh, in developing our own methodology. I think we could, uh, entertain again the idea of, uh, disposing of these properties to, to help us with, uh, during a time of, uh, maintenance, you know, when we don't have a lot of staff to take care of the maintenance, uh, of these properties is expensive, can get expensive. And, um, not that the sale of the property or the disposal of the property could, could gain or garner a lot of, um, monies or, uh, you know, profit. I think the, the bigger issue is that it would not have to be maintained by the city. So I offer that up in the air as well. The RV park is something we, we talked about and have talked about for quite some time now too, two and a half years since I've been on the committee. And, uh, I certainly see that as a central issue when I, when I think about the, of the projects that are, that are going on, the Co project and the rivers and all the, the trails that link, uh, Clockman Park to John Storm, et cetera. And now we're thinking, uh, through the, the middle of Oregon City and up on the prom, et cetera. So, uh, it was Lang O'Handson that actually, uh, produced a, a, this concept drawing of a new RV park, what it might look like. And they presented, actually it was presented by Larry, Larry Potter, to the committee about a year, a year and a half ago. And, um, I think it bears looking into, especially at this time when we're, we are, uh, reconsidering or looking into the Co project. And, uh, that, that area could definitely use, um, some spursing up and, uh, and could have a definite economic multiplier in, in, uh, you know, we've, we've got such a nice site for an RV park. And, uh, it's great, it's used, it actually brings in a profit for the city of Oregon City, but it actually could bring in a lot more, uh, in, in my discussions with the staff. And, uh, I think we should look into, um, or open up that discussion again about that in light of the new developments that we see down there. We've been to, uh, keeping, uh, an eye on Singer Falls project and, and had a, we've had a, a briefing by Marshall Wimmer and the Rotary, uh, club. And, and I'm very enthusiastic about this project down there. And I know that recently, you know, that, uh, they, they got about four hundred and fifty plants or so and they were able to send some Rotarians down there during our cleanup day in Oregon City. And, uh, did a great job cleaning up the, the staircase, et cetera. But they, they, they sent out a request for proposal for the, for the mural, the removal of the mural and, uh, the replacement of that mural. They got sixty-three applicants actually from all over the country and they've narrowed it down to three unless they've actually decided on, on one of the three. I'm not sure, they were kind of in the process of deciding. Okay. And, uh, so the first, the first, uh, uh, part of the Singer Fall project that the Rotary Club's involved in is, is the replacing of that mural, as you know. And there's other, other, uh, in the future plans to do more things. And one of the things that's on the table, I, I, I think also, as you know, is the lighting of the falls, it used to be lit. But I see, I see the, the, that area or that section of Oregon City as being so unique. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty jazzed about seeing, for instance, the, the Oregon City Bridge being refurbished and with the knowledge of the Singer Falls project, um, and, uh, potentially being relit, et cetera, in the future. Uh, how unique our landscape is and everything right there, I think it's a definite, uh, destination in my mind, uh, what we talk about, uh, with, uh, Concordia. You know, I see Oregon City being a destination, uh, much more so in the, in the future for its uniqueness. And I think the Singer Falls project is, is something in, in this, in this area, very, there's momentum, there's a center of gravity here, I like to call it, and, uh, Singer, Singer Falls is a part of that. And we're, we're also proponent and been watching the, the, the naming, um, of trail languages and sta- and the standard signages that are, uh, that are going in. And again, as far as the, the, the center of gravity, what we see is, is, you know, right, pretty much right here in the center of Oregon City. And, and the trail languages that could, that could be found between the prom and Waterboard Park and, and, uh, the prom and, and, uh, Canema and Old Canema Park. And the waterfront there and into the city, main street, uh, Oregon City, of course, as you know, also got a grant for, uh, some work of assignments there and, uh, um, up to the, for the center and up the prom. So, uh, we are, we are proponents of that and we are, are getting updates from Scott, uh, Reverend Suss and Denise as well. As far as your, uh, one of your goals is on the establishing the heritage committee. I am, uh, um, we, we have talked about the, the, uh, the heritage and the significance of Oregon City, uh, in, on the committee as long as I've been on the committee and, and, and see that as a definite benefit. And, uh, I see over, some overlap and, and integration and cooperation and collaboration that we could do with, with that committee. And I know that the formation of that committee is still off in the future a little bit, but I, uh, we see that as a, as a definite pro, um, and also working with that committee. And lastly, just a little bit on facilities, um, starting with, with the pool. Uh, you know, I'm a, I think most of you know that I'm a swim dad, I'm, I'm, I've been swimming all my life and we have a new masters team, uh, by the way, that, uh, was started recently there. And, uh, the swimming team is actually doing really well, the, the, I'm, I'm also the high school swimming coach. Uh, the, the age group coach, uh, the age group swimming team is doing, uh, quite well. They have a gal that's, uh, third in, third in the country, uh, for one of her races as a thirteen-year-old, so nationally ranked, um, folks there at the pool. So all the other things that are going on at the pool, it's another real center of gravity that we've got going. And, uh, you know, we were able, were able to have swimming meets there for both the high school and, and otherwise. And all of the projects that have been completed or still, uh, are going to be completed, like the acoustic tiles of the weather and all the things that need to be done there. Um, certainly appreciate, uh, the, the help and the cooperation of, uh, the commission, the mayor and the city manager and the staff. What else here, just a couple more things. Um, actually, I could probably, I could probably end it there. There's a lot of other facilities and, 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 uh, restroom facilities and, and park, uh, trail systems and things like that that require maintenance and that type of thing upkeep. And, uh, we're, we're also paying attention to that and, uh, keeping a good eye on that, so.
I could see some of this is making lists, who wants to speak first?
Wow, that's a lot. So we need to model all of our other, um, committees, lots of this, this group. Um, it's, it's amazing and, and, uh, I mean, you've done so much work, we all appreciate the amount of work that you've done, especially, um, encouraging us to, to deal with some of the issues at the pool and, and, and things. But, um, a couple of things I just wanted to mention, I'm, I'm kind of excited about, um, seeing the RV park discussion, um, continue maybe a little bit in the future. Um, I spend a fair amount of my time down there. Um, well, not all year long, but mainly starting tomorrow, um, through Monday, I'll be living down there. Um, and, um, it's, you know, Clockman Park is one of those places that, um, you know, maybe not all of us that live in Oregon City spend a huge amount of time in. But when you go down there, uh, for a couple of days and, um, really, um, spend time in that park, it's an amazing park. And, um, I, I just, every time I'm, I'm back down there with the, with the festival and doing that, um, just reminded on how amazing that park is. Um, the, probably one of the smartest things that we've ever done in this city with the parks is this partnership with the, the high school. I mean, it's unbelievable. Um, I go to, um, almost every, you know, once or twice a week, I walk over to the construction room, um, to see what they're doing. And, you know, they've built, you know, a lot of the pieces of the, the, the project for Wesley Lynn at the school and then transported over there in pieces and, um, if they can just keep going until we get all the parks done. Um, I mean, what, what a better, uh, the, the, the facilities that they're building are so well done. Um, and, you know, what a better thing than to have the students in this town build the parks so that when they stay in this town or their families stay in this town, they can really just say, these are our parks. Um, you know, I, I, I'm glad it started and I hope it never stops, um, because it's just, um, unbelievable to see what they're doing. Um, the, um, I'm glad you guys are working on the dog, dog parks, but I'm not a dog person, I'll say that. I'm very vocal, I've never understood it. Uh, I just never have, um, been a dog person, but there's a lot of dog people. It shocked me when I went walking around Oregon City campaigning on many, as many different things. I was like, I had no idea this many people had dogs, had no idea. Um, and the Singer Hill, um, Singer Falls, um, I can't wait to see that done. Um, so any, any, um, input and help that you guys are doing on that is well appreciated. I, I would love to see that relit, um, it's, it's great. So thank you for your work and, and thank you for, well, to pass it on to the rest of the, the, the group. Um, we're really, um, kind of amazed at all the things that are going on, um, from the staff as well. And, um, so, and thanks to the mayor for filling, filling that hurt.
We have the applicants, it's the most important, so, so people are interested in parks.
Thank you.
Hi there.
I have this very brief one, if you do look at dog parks, I know we visited one city, but a lot of people had Great Danes and the beds was like this high. It was very ornate, but I think it's something higher for the.
Yeah, well, actually, I was about to talk about construction, uh, last. Well, actually, I was talking about last time that project. So they would make it big and I'm sure pretty solid.
My list is short, but you'll have to, I had somebody say, oh, this is wonderful. This is a short agenda. And normally, actually, normally when we have one of our advisory groups or boards come before us, the response isn't that short because we've heard things, we hear these things, we've heard things from other people. And I've got a few thoughts to give you to mine. The dog parks, I mean, is an important one. I've got a park across from, across from this primary functions, that way. Jenna's been kept out, I've gotten complaints recently, but the only thing people are suggesting was just to put up little bags and have a little fresh thing like you have, for example, like on Clackamas, the trail that goes along the coal trail and along the Clackamas River has some bags that you can pick up and have a retainer you can put them in afterwards. That may make a lot of difference. Pocket parks. Nine years ago, I, as a city commissioner, had a debate with a person that was running for mayor. That was Alice Morris at what was then, it no longer exists, but was then at Crossroads Alternative School, me supporting the measure for the song of the pocket parks and her being opposed to it. That's what happened, I think, in a debate with Alice Morris. I lost it, as far as the students were concerned, anyway. One of the students actually went in and wrote this wonderful letter to the editor as to why all my reasons were not very good. But anyway, the thing is, what I would really suggest, one thing is, I bet if we put every one of those pocket parks on the Dallas separately, we probably sold them all. The point is that people who live close to them have some identity to those pocket parks. And one thing, and it takes more work, but maybe it's not that difficult, is to actually perhaps some kind of survey of the people that are in the immediate vicinity of those parks to find out what they do, what best use should be, or what the best use is. And that might better guide the, how to proceed on this particular thing. We have some, we've got some property that I don't think are formally designated parks. One that strikes, and I may be wrong, maybe it is on our charter, but the land that runs right along the Clackamas River there along the trail, I knew that the property adjacent to a parking area there belonged to the city, but apparently that whole stretch does. I don't know if that's ever been adopted as an ordinance. Now, maybe we should have different designations. A definition of parks, maybe a definition of open spaces, maybe a definition of natural areas. And I could fall into one of these definitions, but it's a mechanism, once we identify them as such, of making sure that they're preserved, that they don't go to a vote of the people that have it removed from designation without a discussion of it occurring. There are also, and there are a lot of developments in the Barclay Hills areas and Laxtry areas along Will Creek Canyon where we should have those developments, but several parcels of those lands were actually given to the city by the developers. They're on a map. I'm sure Paul is listed as a long series of properties that are owned by the city. My guess is some of these properties or those areas, they're not supposed to be built on, that's why the developer gave them to the city. How do we deal with it? Maybe Metro would take them if they're close enough to the metro home spaces, but that's something that I think that ought to be looked at. Some of those presented some time ago, and maybe it's on your list or maybe it fell through the cracks, I don't know. The area next to the RV park, some discussions having that as a tent area for kayakers. People, the notion is that if we get those locks open for recreational use and so forth, that there probably isn't a place once you really hit the urban areas where some people can camp and they may make a day fit for a city and they go further down the river to Portland, to the Portland area, and that might be a great spot for something like that. I know this brought up at some time and wanted to bring that up. You were talking about the Heritage Committee and maybe, when we form this, maybe there's some specific existing committees that we would like represented formally on the Heritage Committee. Of course, the Story Review Board might be one of them, but given the interest in parks and recreation, that may also be another. Those are some thoughts that came to my mind when you were speaking. It's a great presentation. I really, straight that you brought it forward. You're doing a tremendous job and I've been impressed with the people that have applied to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I think you have a real great bunch of dedicated individuals there and I'm really pleased for this report. Again, I'm going to ask if there are any comments from the audience.
I have one more, just in conjunction with your mention of the kayaks, there's a new kayak company opening here in Oregon City. And so, and it's right in that area.
Right. A lot of interest there. Yes, cool. You have a question?
You mentioned the lighting on the falls itself, and you were going through that. Have you or the Heritage Committee or Mr. Archer discussed anything along the line of possibly having that to do with solar lighting rather than using infrastructure in the city itself? I do know that there are grants available, especially Oregon. The governor, it has earmarked a certain push for Oregon to be one of the leaders in alternative energy and solar lighting of certain things within the city would actually release it from the infrastructure and produce a good return here.
Yeah, we certainly have not gotten that far down. I know that the Marsha Wimmer and her discussions with us let's know that the lighting was several years off, two, three years off or more. There certainly, the old infrastructure is still there that would have to be replaced and, you know, and that would come at a cost as well. But certainly we could look into, that's something we could look into. And that might, that might actually bring that closer, closer to present day than thinking about that in the future, which is one of the more costly things that would certainly be looked at for the falls project.
Anybody else have any questions? I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the item on the list, but I thought this would be a great, that's something to bring forward was, I had mentioned actually, I think, three or four months ago, well, it had to be since I was mayor, so not four months ago, but that Clackamas Community College was chosen to be what is called an Army Strong Community Center. This center was created to provide services to veterans in the area, one-stop places to find out what support systems existed, also to make use of the various programs that are available at Clackamas Community College. The center has been functioning, I think, for a month or so. It is the only such center not on a military base in the West. That's another, and Clackamas Community College, because partially they have had so much support that they have, in terms of various programs that they have given to veterans, went high upon their list, and was selected as the, as the place, and the only place in Oregon that we had that kind of service available. On Saturday, they had a formal ribbon cutting. There were many, many people there. Lieutenant General Jack Schultz, excuse me, Stoltz, not Schultz, Stoltz, who is the chief of the Army Reserve, he's a commanding general of the US Army Reserve Command, was there along with several representatives of the military. I was asked to be there to actually sign a document that is basically a covenant, and I'm just going to read this to you. Together we recognize the commitments that soldiers and their families are making every day. The strength of soldiers comes from the strength of their families. The strength of families is supported by the strength of the community. The strength of community comes from the support of employers, educators, civic and business leaders, and the citizens. This covenant acknowledges the value and importance of legislation that honors a sacrifice and provides for the needs of service members and their families, has access to affordable higher education for service members and their families, supporting service members and their families in accessing state and local services and resources, creating new initiatives and partnerships to expand services and support to our service members and their families. The covenant commits all parties to building programs and partnerships that support the strength, resilience, and readiness of service members and their families. This is in support of the Army Strong Community Center at Clackamas Community College and with the various signatures. It was a very moving event, and there were many, many people attended it. And so I wanted to indicate that, that particular community center, although it's existed for a month, has been formally open. Thank you. With that, I will ask, if we got, I know we do, we've got on our list people for sentences of comments. We'd like you to restrict, to handle more than three minutes and to state your name and whether or not you reside in Oregon State. And I'll ask the first two people to come up. Kelly Stevenson and Carrie Shaker, would you come up, please?
Evening.
Say again.
See you too. I'm Kelly Stevenson.
I'm Carrie Shaker, I live in Oregon City.
Are you speaking together?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
I own that property at 722 Fifth Street in Oregon City. I'm here tonight to make a run or write. In addition to here, I'm here to address the staff report by the city manager, which I know that everybody's had a copy of, see. On January 1st, 2009, I got a call from my renter Carrie here at approximately 10 o'clock telling me a sewer flowing uncontrollably from the toilet and the shower and the downstairs of my home. I immediately got in my car and headed there, and this is what I found. I realized I only have three minutes and I will try to quick stop.
Well, we'll give you a little bit more time.
Okay. We'll do that. I called an emergency plumber and the findings were the city sewer line was overflowing into my home. So there was, so there I was bucketing out with the help of my renter, sewage for hours at end into the early morning hours, making no headway whatsoever. At 7 o'clock in the morning, I called the city and informed them that they, and they said that they were aware of the problem, and told me to come and pick up an instant report and also to find independent help as they didn't have the equipment to pump out my basement. I promptly called 1-800-WATER-DAMAGE and they came out and started pumping sewage into a tanker. At that moment, the operator told me that the tanker wouldn't hold the sewage and advised me to call the city to get permission to pump the sewage back into the city sewer system, which at this stage had now subsided as they opened the manhole. We pumped for over five hours to get the sewage out of my basement. 1-800-WATER-DAMAGE then continued to remove the carpet, washer dryer, furniture, wall board, counters, you name it, everything four and a half feet and down was taken out of the basement of this home, along with all of Carrie's had moved in a month prior and all of her stuff was down there, still in boxes, hadn't even unpacked, and it was all destroyed. I then proceeded to call a list of vendors to make the necessary repairs and to help out my tenant. During this time, the city sent out an appraiser, an app hunter from the city's insurance company. She asked me for my billings and invoices, which I gladly gave her. About two weeks later, she came back and told me that the city paid the maximum $50,000, which I was informed was the city's maximum. At this time, my bills were in far in excess of $73,000. I tried to explain that this is not fair and this was not my fault and I can't afford to pay the vendors the extra $23,000. I did not have that kind of money. At this point, the problems of payment to vendors became worse because the city refused to pay anything unless I signed off on a $50,000 limit. Vendors were calling me every day and evening, nights and weekends. And while this was going on, I was trying to manage my business, keep my tenants satisfied, and try to work with the vendors. At this point, I realized I was being held hostage, as far as I was concerned, by the city, the $50,000. I couldn't get a partial payment, I couldn't get any commitment for anything over $50,000. I don't know what I was supposed to do at this stage. Because of the pressure I went through, I was advised to get hold of an attorney and took his advice. This is what I did. Bankruptcy was even discussed, and I am not a person that will go into bankruptcy for something like this. I will fight and get myself out of a situation, but this was not my fault. While all of this was going on, a second incident occurred. On March 12th, I received a call from 1910 yet again, telling me that sewage was coming from the toilet and the shower again. The whole nightmare was happening all over again. I immediately called Rescue Ruder and he sent out a camera of the sewer line and found that the sewer line to my house was broken and had collapsed. According to the Rescue Ruder technician, the line had collapsed on the city side. And he advised me to call the city immediately, which I did, and the city came out to this. And this is what happened. And this is why I want to address this letter that I got from the city manager. Specifically, because of the staff report on page two, paragraph three, as from, as accurate as it can possibly be, the city worker asked me that he could access the pipe from my grass area by the curb. So he didn't have to dig up the curb or the roadway. I allowed him to do so. Upon digging, he exposed a concrete pipe that had collapsed, located on the city side. The Rescue Ruder tech explained that the pipe collapsed in that way due to the extent of water flowing the wrong way down the pipe. I asked the city worker not to repair the pipe until I had had a chance to go down and pick up a backflow device for this pipe, which would never happen again. He mentioned to me that this was not procedure for entering store a backflow device. I left to go and pick up the pipe. Returning, I found the pipe fixed, the hole filled in, the city worker talked to the Rescue Ruder about his bill, which is approximately $1,300. At this point, I have additional vendors, I've got charges for cleanup, I've got initial billings, and now I'm in excess of $100,000. I'm at about $103,000. And the city and the insurance company continues to delay any partial payment and are continuing to argue for repair bills. Vendors continuing to call in even more aggressive manner and sending me to collections. The pressure is tremendous, and this is taking a toll on my business and on my home. Quite simply and factually, the second incident is the responsibility of the city and they will not acknowledge it and be responsible for their actions. I've met my obligations to my vendors and vendors and been forced. Did I do that on the phone? I met my obligations to the vendors, bills, and been forced by the city to hire an attorney. I have lost a portion of my business, my home is now in full closure, and I have suffered credit beyond belief, as I'm sure you can imagine. On the staff report on page three, paragraph three, it states that in 30 years, the government experiences in reopening of a civil claim has not occurred. But the sewage events were not my fault and it was the city's responsibility. Your delaying tactics may cause me to lose my business and my home. Case in point, I closed in reading from an article on the Oregonian date of December 11th, 2010, covering the reopening of a case just like covering the reopening of a case just like mine. The homeowners then asked for permission to pay their legal bills, nearly voted to give the couple forty-five thousand dollars. Nearly the payment was something more than reimbursement. There was a bad feeling not only in the property owner, but in the people of the neighborhood, who'd be, who believed that the city needed to take more responsibility for the disaster, nearly said. Me nearly, excuse me. I'm asking for the fear, for fairness, for reimbursement of my attorney's fees, which comes to twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars. That's all I have to say. Thank you, it's my, I appreciate it.
And Amy, you'll speak to this, you should then. Go ahead, because the on-ramp, set up the hurricane, make sure you're asking questions.
Um, as a tenant, um, of a home, I, I was the only one that was present throughout the entirety of both events. Um, Kelly's my landlord, has lived in the homes since just about two weeks before the first event occurred. Um, my insurance quickly did an investigation, um, and spoke with people, I believe, at the city level, as well as, um, some of the vendors that assisted, um, and quickly paid out my claim. Um, I don't know a lot of the legal things that have gone in between, but what I do know is that I was there and I was told both times by two different city employees that this was a city problem. The first time I was told that was on the first evening when, uh, January first, when the first flood occurred. Um, I was told directly that this was a direct result of, um, sewage being diverted from Fifth Street all down Seventh Street after a heavy snow and a torrential rain, um, which caused water to back up into the home. You could see down the manholes, it was almost coming up into the street. Um, on the second occasion, um, I was told by the city worker that was there, um, and by the, the gentleman from Roderter, that the collapse of the cement, um, elbow in the roadway, um, was a direct result of water being forced, um, the wrong direction in the previous event. That there would be no other reason for a breakdown, um, of that type of material in that location. Um, so, I think that's all I have to say.
You made separate claims to your insurance company, is that right?
As a renter, my only claim is for my belongings. Um, however, I will tell you that, um, I lived in half of the home for over a year. Um, I certainly wasn't reimbursed for any of the anguish that I went through, um, and any of this. And me, I'm a single mom living there with my young child in half of the home that we had just rented and Kelly's been really great about trying to make this work and I've hopefully, I've been good to him as well and trying to make it work, but, um, certainly it's been a challenge for everybody. And, and now as a renter, um, because of Kelly facing foreclosure, now I'm facing, you know, working through this the whole time with him and, and trying to be understanding of everything that's going on. Now I'm losing my home as well. And it's imminent.
I, I think through the city manager, then, uh, Greg, uh, asked that you respond to this and maybe the situations that came up that caused this back up and then perhaps our city attorney as well. Uh, I don't know. When I, I first bought in, uh, your letter, I passed it to our public works director, Nancy Kraschauer, and then subsequently, and I should have done at the same time, uh, to, uh, David Frazier. I indicated that I had done so and he subsequently responded, so, Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, um, as I indicated in my email to the commission, this is not a courtroom. Um, I think Mr. Stevenson's been through the judicial process with an attorney and sued the city and signed a settlement that he consented to. Um, unfortunately, when I investigated this, or I don't know if it's unfortunate, but it sure feels like it's sitting here, uh, the information that he just shared with you, I didn't have. Um, it, it sounds different than the information that's in our file. It sounds different than the information that was provided by our insurance company when they investigated it. It also sounds different than what I got from our staff when I interviewed our employees. Um, it does sound like, based on my investigation of the file, and again, if you note my letter, right after you brought this to my attention, Mayor, I called Mr. Stevenson, I asked him to come in and, uh, I had an interview with him on the phone and then asked him to submit a letter, which you have seen. The letter was about a paragraph long and said, you have all the information you need to make a decision. That's different than the argument he presented here this evening. So when I wrote my staff report, it was based on, uh, the information he provided, as well as the facts that I could glean from the interviews of our employees and discussion with our attorneys, as well as our insurance carrier. Uh, so based on that, I don't believe that the second incident was the city's responsibility, based on the information available to me. And my recommendation to you is that, um, when someone signs a settlement agreement for a full and final settlement after being represented by an attorney, I don't know what the city, what else the city could do. Um, but I think if you pay something other than that, I mean, if you wanted attorney's fees during that negotiation process for the settlement, that is obviously where your attorney would assert an entitlement to attorney's fees. Uh, and so I'm assuming that that was included in the amount. Um, there's also information from our insurance carrier about some questionable practices that were involved in the amount of the claim. Uh, I'm not at liberty to discuss those with you without advice of counsel, but, um, there's some doubt about how much, how some of the work was built out and so forth that the, I think the insurance company had concerns about. So based on the information I have, I think they've been fairly compensated for the loss and, um, to come to the city after you've already signed a settlement and been fairly compensated and then say, we want another crack at it. That's the commission's call if you want to make that decision.
Um, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions and perhaps Nancy Kraschauer is the best one. The, the situation that, um, we awarded with a percentage amount and not the claimed attorney's amount before is based on, I think staff regarded it as a, uh, contractor's fault, a contractor that we had hired. Now, I don't know how that came through litigation, but with a four by four that was lodged in the sewer in the Kanema pipe. And that, uh, that, that was, that would not be regarded as an act of God. This, uh, if you could describe the situation that existed under these flooding conditions, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
The first storm was at where this, um, main road was still, had, and you guys, we exploded, we were part of the gang, and they're part of the central area. And our screws were all over, um, um, our managed storm flow. In this case, the, uh, screw type that goes down Main Avenue, it was, um, was overwhelmed by probably implosion, and, um, it was so pasty of the school bag, we passed, it was coming in water, and back up into me at home. The other thing that was happening was upstream, actually, upstream part first. Um, further upstream on Main Avenue, up, up in public at home, that sewer line was inundated by, uh, stormwater. And so there was a storming so much down south that because we weren't able to handle it, so the main sewer line, we were trying to divert around, it was very, very strong. And that's where, in this main hall, it ended up, um, regarding, you know, obviously, as a, forming this low sewer pipe. So in those situations, you really have a backflow device. Back and out so that in case it, because people could be paced around you and working your way, um, that you can prevent some of the damage. I mean, not to say we're, uh, I mean, the carbon is always, it's a better situation. But, um, we can very personally, that's certainly not in our control to, um, have that kind of a stormy, bad, lot of that.
Is there a piece of wood?
Not, not of this one. This is the other one that he was referring to from last year. Uh, so what I was trying to distinguish between was a, was apparently a contractor's mistake that the city hired on that event versus an act of God situation as referred to, to, on this other event. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just hold off one minute. Do you have, do you happen to know the total amount of the settlement, judicial settlement?
Uh, it's in my memo to you, I believe it was, uh, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand. So the eighty thousand essentially covered, um, uh, the actual work down on the issue, I guess there's, I, I said, um, I did the subtraction of hundred three minus twenty seven, which is seventy-five thousand. So the eighty thousand basically covered the, um, the cost that he was talking about. Um, uh, I guess, seeking advice of counsel, of course, I realize the commission itself can make a decision, but, uh, under these conditions, I, I do feel, especially in an act of God situation, I'd like to hear your opinion.
Well, I have not read the file, I've been directed not to, but from what I understand is that, uh, is a settlement agreement. Settlement agreements for all claims, there's no legal requirement that you pay, uh, anything more than has been paid by the insurance company. There may be an issue if you pay more than you're obliged to pay, that gives us spent city funds. You gotta deal with that as well.
Curious, Mayor, why you think it's an act of God when they're purposely diverting water from one sewer line to another and causing this problem? How is that an act of God?
Stronger than is what I'm calling an act of God. And, uh, um, my guess is there are a lot of old houses that were probably built that didn't have flapper controls. I don't know, just those against, uh, I, I don't think mine is built below the sewer line, but I'm old enough that, uh, there could be issues there.
And sorry to interrupt again, but at, at this stage, when I offered to go and get the flapper valve and they didn't even take the time for me to get back, they fixed it and they buried it again and didn't put a flapper valve on it. You, you're saying to me that now you do put flapper valves on, I don't understand that, that's.
I imagine current codes would probably look at that particular issue in terms of current construction.
Even where you put it, you want to put it where you can have some sort of a vault where you can get at it. Sometimes they're even inside the homes. So our crew had determined that where the sewer lateral had actually broken was not the appropriate location to put the flapper valve. And for more information about that, I'd really need to talk to my crew because that, um, that's part, probably part of the information maybe that the city manager was missing, mentioning that hadn't been provided. We hadn't heard that from, we've talked about the flapper valve, but we hadn't heard that it had anything to do with the repairs that our crew made.
Is there any questions to ask?
Just, actually, I'm kind of curious about, um, what, um, that I, um, because I have read the file myself, and when I read the file, um, my information that I saw is exactly what, you know, Mr. Frazier's reported, that the break was on the property owner's side in the second incident. And Kelly was just mentioning that because I was on the city side. Okay, that's, I guess, I'm interested in reconciling those bets, that, that fact, because, um, you know, with, with what I saw with, in the file, it seemed to indicate that it was on, on your side. So I'm curious as to how we can just kind of come to a conclusion on where, where the break actually was.
They exited, because they didn't want to come to the curb and they didn't want to add another street. So they exited through a grass area and they dug under, and it was blatantly obvious. We all saw it.
I'm, I'm curious why the city would pay, uh, dig it up, fix it, repair it, sell it back in and pay the bill if it wasn't on the city's side?
Giving them the break.
Right. From, from what I understand, the, um, sewer crew was trying to help them out. So I will just talk to the group again. I mean, I, I don't think this is a time to necessarily debate this, but, um, that's what our understanding is.
And, and Mayor, if I might, I mean, I, I wrote this letter April fifth, and, uh, I don't know when Mr. Stevenson got it, but I'm thinking within a week or so of me writing the letter, he got it. And here I am tonight, sitting here, hearing new information, a whole new argument that I've never heard before. And to me, this is, this is not a courtroom. And, and if you're really trying to get the facts, and, and as Commissioner and as you mentioned, this whole thing turns, you know, some of your decisions really turn on the facts. And I, I cautioned that what I expected, if this was a legitimate argument, is that I would have heard this information at the time I invited the information to come forward. Please let me know all the facts and information you have so I can verify and corroborate them. Or else we're gonna be in this commission meeting and for the first time, I'm gonna get a surprise like this and somebody's gonna come in with a very emotionally compelling argument and no, no way that I can verify the information that's been heard before here tonight. And, and again, I, I would actually be curious why a person would sign a settlement agreement if they didn't think it was fair and full and final. I don't understand that.
So because, uh, my attorney said to me, if this is going to court, it's gonna cost me another thirty thousand dollars. And I was suggested to take the settlement because the maximum that I would probably get is a hundred and three thousand dollars. Well, if we put that on top of another thirty thousand dollar bill, I'm still completely backwards.
I would just like to say that, um, Kelly and I have never had a conversation about this, but I, as far as what he wanted me to say, or what should happen or anything, called me and asked me to come tonight, I don't, I wasn't at the court hearing, but talking about fabrications and things like that, I'm telling you, it's not exactly what it was like to live through it and what I heard from the people who were present at the time, that's all I can say about that. I don't know anything about new information or what's new or what's old, but I do know what I heard and I do know what I saw, so.
I mean, Thomas? I feel if you supplied, if you've got other information that wasn't supplied, you need to speak again to the city manager about this. Uh, uh, I'm not able to make motion, but I don't know that anybody's gonna put forward one at this specific time on the settlement. Um, like I say, I, I think there's a distinction between the situation that we had, uh, in Kanema area, the contractor had likely had let something in the sewer system that caused the backup. There's this, this situation in which indeed the city was trying to control a situation, but if they weren't doing it there, we probably might have had an incident in a, in a different property, so, um, they were under emergency conditions, they were probably making the best decisions that they could make under those different conditions. Uh, I do make a distinction between something that is really not caused by the city or the city contractor, from one that is caused by the city or the city contractor, that would be the distinction I would present in there. Eric?
I would like to have us, um, have them reconsider looking into this with new information.
I would too.
Yeah. We all agree. Thank you for coming up.
If, if, if we could ask the, Mr. Stevenson to put that information in writing. I don't want to try to make his argument for him, I wanna, and any supporting documentation you have to prove any of the things you said. Again, like last time, please.
We're happy to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, that, I guess we're due to find, uh, for, for a break. Oh, we got more citizen, yes, we do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, we do have more citizen comments. Uh, we have now Tony Tully and Howard Dees, who's aboard.
I'm with Philly and I think that he had a quick thought, then I'm with to make sure he was able to.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Your name?
Tony Tully, I live in Oregon City on Lut Avenue. Um, I'm here to speak, uh, to the, uh, being Fred and Mr. Stevenson, known him for many, many years. And I'd like to make this pretty brief, but, um, you know, I've been a Rotarian for four or five years and, uh, I've known Kelly for a lot longer than that. And I know what kind of person he is. And, uh, you know, he, um, he's a very honest, hardworking person. And I, uh, I feel the things that have happened, um, have been very unfortunate. And I think, uh, he's done the best that he can with, with the situation. Um, it's been very challenging. I, I had the, uh, I had the challenge of going down to that house, uh, several times to assist him when, uh, the runner was, was not there. And, uh, it was, uh, it, it was unbelievable to see for the first time. It was, uh, it was pretty, pretty scary actually in the beginning. So, uh, but again, I just want to state what kind of person he is. And, uh, you know, I know that, uh, he has a tremendous mind integrity and, uh, I believe in, uh, what he says is, uh, is right. And I hope that, you know, that we have the opportunity at some point to, uh, to make a decision that, uh, makes this right. And, uh, he has the ability to, to pay off those bills and I hope the city has the opportunity to, uh, to assist him. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Rex Nickal, is that right? Is that pronounced Nick?
Nick.
Nick. Thank you. And Amber Holbecker, if you please go forward.
My name is Rex Nicku, I live on two one five off in your aisle. I own a property contiguous in Kelly's home. And I witnessed what that man went through, not once, but twice. I've always been taught that emotion blocks logic. And I've been a strong proponent of that. And I compliment the commission of reconsidering this situation based upon fact, not emotion. I suggest very, very strongly that, uh, you think and not let a motion enter into your decision. The city has all the buildings, all the files, all the correspondence that's been provided for your staff. And Sir Kelly will write another letter restating new information that he may have. And, uh, I again want to reaffirm that, uh, this man went through a real traumatic experience. It's not finished yet. It's not finished yet. He's extremely close to losing his home due to foreclosure because of the financial figure pass. The money awarded net did not cover those expenses. Sam Z, attorney, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come, come, come forward, Gail. Who, who do you want to go forward?
Yeah, very good. All of you. Good evening. I'm Amber Holbecker, I'm representing the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce this evening. And, uh, we're here, this little group of us is here to talk about tourism in Oregon City. And, uh, in fact, last week was National Tourism Week. And on May eleventh, uh, the Oregon City Tourism Display, um, that we all, as a cooperative effort, uh, with a number of folks, uh, included on your, uh, handout, hopefully that got around to your, your stations there, um, was a People's Choice at the Clackamas County Tourism Week event held at the Monarch Hotel. And, uh, we're all very proud of this week's effort and the results. And in fact, those effort or those results will end up with a thousand dollars worth of a professional photo shoot here for Oregon City. And we're very excited to work together once again to develop that list of, of what we'd like to see photographed to represent Oregon City in the future for our, um, promotional and marketing efforts for Oregon City. And, um, just really wanted to point out, this took a great picture of Marjorie Rala Harding in front of part of our display there at the event. Hopefully you're taking a look at that. And, uh, in fact, Rala is holding that, uh, highly sought after wooden coin, one side representing...
This is only you, Gail?
Representing, uh, the old, more, I guess, original, if you will, image of the Oregon Beaver Coin. And then the other side, of course, is your free ticket into the free ride on the free elevator. Um, but it's fun nonetheless. And we're hoping to be able to use that, uh, once again for further tourism opportunities here in Oregon City. But, uh, I just really wanted to point out that our team included a pretty wide range of folks. Um, I'd like to just very quickly run through their names. Um, Roland March Harding, Dan Fowler, Lloyd Purdy, Gail Yazaluna, who's joining me up here, um, Kathy McMahon, Jackie Hammond Williams, Lisa Christopher, Heidi Peterson, the City of Oregon City support, um, thank you David Fraser for your support, and Nancy Qureshower, and a couple of staff members from, um, Parks and, um, Public Works. They did a lot of last minute work on our behalf and, uh, we very much appreciate their help. Rocky Smith, Jr., he was the one that committed us to being part of this event, so thank you, Rocky. I think it was a good result. Uh, we had donations from, uh, Kings River Winery, Thelma Hagan Miller, who's been a friend of tourism for a long time. Uh, I did fail to put out, uh, put on those flyers or those, um, the informational sheets. Bruce Hanson of Ransdon Fine Arts is actually the artist responsible for those coins that you have in your hands. And, uh, and of course, our Chamber of Commerce, um, helped to pull this all together as well. On the reverse side is, uh, a link to, uh, Mounted Territory's website. And, uh, what it does now is they're offering a, a really quick, easy way for visitors to that county tourism website to visit each of our communities within, uh, Clackamas County. And so, once you travel to the website, um, down the, uh, left-hand side of that first screen you see, um, in tiny, tiny print, it does, it indicates communities, so you would click on communities. And then it would show that first, um, graphic of Oregon's Mounted Territory communities. And just below that is a graphic of, um, a brochure. And then that takes you, if you click on that, it takes you to their online brochure for each community. And so it shows what that image would look like. And then I went ahead to Oregon City's online brochure and hopefully you now have, um, one of those nice, high-quality ones that are hopefully going to be sent to folks, um, far and wide, um, trying to direct them to Oregon City. So, um, we're proud of, um, what we've accomplished and we have more to do and, uh, looking forward to it. I think there's reason to be excited. Um, just a quick sidebar, uh, representing the chamber, we have a chamber after hours event and ribbon cutting at Congressman Kurt Schrader's office, which is actually just located across High Street from City Hall, five thirty to seven o'clock.
So you go onto W, W, oh, go ahead.
Tomorrow night.
W, W, W dot M Food Territory dot com.
M Food. Actually, it's all Melt, Melt, Hood, M T Hood.
I really do that.
And, uh, at this point, I would, uh, love to introduce Gail and she is going to share a little bit about, um, uh, Oregon City.
Historic Oregon City. And I wanted to invite everyone to come and visit historicoregontcity.org. And, um, because we're the home of Mounted Territory Visitor Information Center, they're on our website. So if you clicked on that tab, you'd come right into it, uh, the thing. And as a direct result of marketing at this trade show, there's lots of links with our partners now on our website. So F Decada and lots of different, um, folks with each community have been invited to be on our website and now they, um, they are. So, so it was very fun and if you want to try it.
Um, this was a great event. This was, this was great. Um, so thank you for making that presentation tonight too. I just wanted to say that, um, you know, we, this entire group on this list has, has worked on so many, um, things in Oregon City, events, saving museums, seeing them closed, I mean, all sorts of things. We've worked so hard. Um, and at the event, I said, this is the first time we've ever done anything together.
And what else did you...
In my lifetime. And Thomas, as we've done it before, we used to, you know, I said, in my lifetime, I've never seen it. Um, and I, I guess, you know, what I envisioned this becoming, um, this first step in, um, putting this booth together, to me is the first step in, um, which, you know, we've been through this process in the last couple of months of talking about what the, um, Oregon City, uh, Tourism Council is going to be in, in, in morphing into its next phase. And, um, I think it's probably as close as it's ever going to get to actually solidifying in some form. Um, and, um, I was so excited to see this happen. Um, and I think what we need to do, this entire list completely, all these people, we need to all be on the same page and we need to work very hard, um, to keep doing this. Because what we did just in this one day was so clear to the rest of the county, um, what we can do when we work together. And we did it very quick.
By doing it two weeks' worth.
Happened in a very quick amount of time. Uh, we had the most people from Oregon City, more, more people involved in this than any of the other, um, communities in the county that were there. The stage was, we couldn't, I wasn't there, I came to work, I got there towards the end of it, you know, it was amazing. And, uh, but I guess not everyone could fit on the stage. Um, they, I, I kind of joked when I got there, they strategically, or, um, I, I found it an odd coincidence that on this side of the aisle was Oregon City and on the other side of the aisle was Westland. They were so jealous.
The football?
It absolutely did in my mind. Um, and I mean, you looked through that room and there was one booth that stood out, one group that stood out, and it was ours. And, um, so I think we're starting to get on, on track. And please, all those that helped on this, don't stop now. Let's keep working together. All right? And I have free rides to the elevator.
I only got two.
Just spend them all in one day. I have one more site, um, more tabs that you can look on that are cited, who traveled in the trail. And so there's more pictures about this event and, so please join it. You can upload your own pictures and tell your story.
Well, once you, you got that People's Choice, I just got flooded with emails. And I just want to thank, uh, all of you that were involved in this project. I think it's, yeah, tremendous, uh, tremendous effort on your part, so we really do appreciate it from all of you. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Shroob? You gotta do it again.
It never ends. Um, so, from here in Oregon City, uh, I'd like to come to the commission's time and, uh, it's, uh, it's been a long and, uh, and, uh, kind of interesting evening so far. Uh, I'd like to acknowledge the commissioners, uh, Mayor Neely, uh, the city manager, uh, David Fraser, thank you sir, and, uh, and chief of police that, uh, that stepped out, and, uh, the other staff and the secret city representatives that are, are present. Uh, I'd like to reference my comment this evening, uh, in, uh, an article that was printed in the Oregon City paper, I believe it was last week, where the commissioners and herbal and renewal commission members, uh, were concerned as to methane on the proposed, uh, river site. Uh, the article was, uh, fairly in-depth and, and I did get a chance to read it somewhat. I, uh, I want to simply, uh, state that as an individual who's worked on the, a large business on, uh, that landfill site since, uh, April of two thousand and two, being the Oregon City Home Depot, I have a personal interest in such comments. Uh, you, you have a concern there. It is a vested interest, especially with those that have not been around that site on, uh, almost a, a daily basis, such as myself. Um, I myself have found that the working environment is, uh, extremely safe, uh, but as an individual, I can only address my own personal views and experience. I did speak with my store manager, uh, presently today, uh, Mr. Randy Miller. Uh, Randy could not be here this evening, uh, but, uh, I conveyed to him, uh, what I was going to just mention tonight. It was the fact that, uh, that he does wish to address this on a more professional level. And it is his intent to, uh, come to the next, uh, commission meeting and, uh, and give you a little bit more information as far as being a business owner on that site and to help you with, uh, your understanding of the things that are involved there. And, uh, I thank you, uh, for your, uh, time this evening and, uh, I encourage you to move ahead on, uh, on this project as I always do. Uh, and, uh, uh, Oregon City really needs this.
I'm going to make the suggestion that, uh, I think you know we're in executive sessions, firmly negotiating with Senator Cal. Uh, it, you, you, you can come and address the commission. There will be at a point where, where it has public meetings regarding it. And, uh, uh, if you could also come to those public meetings, address those concerns regarding the whole of the herbal and renewal commission.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, uh, not only as an individual, uh, have I been attending, uh, the majority meetings since the first year, but, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, as a manager, uh, wanted to be apprised of, uh, everything that I could glean during my visits here also. And it's his intention, especially since the article, uh, recently came out, that, uh, he needs to, uh, be able to, uh, at least explain a few things, uh, from his point of view. And, uh, hopefully that will, uh, help with the understanding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You want, you want, you want to approve the rest of the agenda? If you want to drop the agenda, then we'll take a break.
Oh, my God.
You go, you go find the guy for that one. Okay, we're going to take, uh, take a break. I had, I had somebody in this audience who said...
Good, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you from, uh, Mexico.
Okay, and that finishes the business of the year of the... Anyway. All right. We've, um, gone through what normally is our shortest period and now we're in the public hearing for which we had none. And we're going to have a report, I believe, uh, that's going to involve, um, Mr. Purdy on the Main Street program. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Just briefly, this is a, a result of our, um, last budget hearing where we had some discussion about the fifty thousand, those in the general fund for the Main Street program. And, uh, both Lloyd Purdy and Terry Powers are here to talk to you about the program.
Very good. Who's going to start first?
Good evening, everyone.
Share the board.
Um, yes, thank you. Terry Powers, President of Oregon City. And...
Please wait.
President of...
I'll work on it. I'll work on it.
Glad you're also the board chair of the Main Street, uh, board.
Um, we actually would like to address any concerns you might have about the desert request and give a little explanation. Um, probably the best way to do that is to show you what we're talking about. And so we did have a brief video, about a minute and a half, two-minute video for you. Some of you may have seen it, but if we could get that going, that would be great. be great.
Did you catch that, Benny?
I am catching that.
Um, and I do admire your dedication tonight, Benny. Thank you. Um, now that you've seen the video, if you haven't seen it before, I think you recognize it's a very high-quality piece that was developed, um, in partnership with some private and public dollars. Um, this was developed by businesses on Main Street, and has been donated for our use as a centerpiece of a business recruitment campaign. Um, something we've been working on here for a couple of years since Oregon City, or Main Street Oregon City was formed two and a half years ago. We've had thirty-six new businesses start here in Oregon City. We'd really like to see that continue. We'd like to continue the trend and see even more businesses in the years to come. Um, this is a nationally recognized piece, um, has won several awards, and at this point, we're actually working to develop collateral to go along with that. Um, we're asking Oregon City at this point to partner with us so that we can actually get this implemented and, and out there to the public. Um, if you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to answer them.
I think, of course, with the, uh, budget committee and the decisions, we need about the fifty thousand that, that, uh, is being allocated. Um, um, the, um, I think part of what triggered it is, of course, you've, you've passed your, your people in the, uh, in your district capacity, uh, through the district in which you're getting, I guess, monthly, uh, funds coming, is that, is the property owners' band?
Uh, he, he runs our general operations.
Yes.
Funding from property owners back into downtown. Uh, there's an annual assessment on property owners.
Right.
City collections and then remits back to downtown. I don't know, we haven't figured out quite how often that comes back into downtown.
Okay. Um, I think the one concern that Kurt expressed that isn't mine, but was, well, now that that's the case, the justification for the fifty thousand, I've already got, this is a partnership, and, uh, the, the, the payment of, uh, in terms of the community, in terms of that partnership is, of the EID, uh, is doing, I think, to a large extent. And, uh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think that, uh, it was on us in the budget to actually identify supporting, uh, uh, partnership. I think that was one of the, one of the issues that was raised, the EID, uh, why, why did you still request these monies out of the city budget, or rather, why the city manager put that as a line item? And, uh, you, you respond to that now, or respond to it when we're having our discussion of the budget, uh, when the commission actually, uh, brings up to itself the budget that has been passed on the committee.
I think that what we're asking is for you to partner with us for a specific campaign. Um, you know, business, new businesses starting in Oregon City is certainly good business for us. We wanna see it continue. Um, this is certainly, I think, a very effective way to do that. Uh, as I mentioned, this is a nationally recognized video, um, was actually used at the historic trust, um, the National Trust, uh, here this week. Um, so it's something that most cities, I think, would not have access to. It has been donated. It's a fifty thousand dollar video, um, through other grants. We've already funded marketing collateral to go along with that. So what we're asking now is for the funding to actually implement that and, and get this out there.
Uh, when is the budget, when, when is the budget coming before us?
Mayor, if I might, um, the commission actually simply requested this discussion on this this evening, so it's not...
Yeah.
Um, I think that's why they came. So, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that you've really explained, uh, what you would intend to do with that, so maybe you could kind of run through, I know you've shown the video, and you've mentioned a campaign, but you were more specific with me. Maybe you could share that with the commission that might help.
Sure. So, what we're putting together is a, a multimedia campaign. It builds on what we've done here with this video as a centerpiece, because it's attention-getting. We'll take this video, it's a minute and thirty seconds, and exists well on, on the web, on YouTube, as a grassroots, uh, product. We'll need to condense it down to about a thirty-second TV commercial. So we get in the local, uh, TV markets, get the message out that Oregon City is interested in entrepreneurs and creative business owners. So funding will be used to do three things, basically. Take this video, make it a TV spot, um, develop print ads that target homegrown heroes, local entrepreneurs, people that are ready to start their business or move from their house into, uh, the next stage of their business. We know we can target local print media that directs them back to the website, to the video. It encourages them to call the city's economic development director, or myself, and help get them into the pipeline for starting their business or growing their business. And then the third opportunity to use funding, extra funding for this campaign, is to get in front of, uh, professional organizations, uh, the American Institute of Architects, the, uh, the School of, School of Sheperry, I'm, I'm, you know, there's, there's entities that already have professionals that you can target and get to, show them the video, and welcome them to downtown and say, let's meet in May, let's meet on Main Street. Come to Oregon City, open your business here. So it's a three-pronged approach, what we call a M.A.S., a mixed-media campaign. Uh, the steps we got on that are a sixty-eighty-thousand-dollar cost. Uh, so what we're saying is, we've been good partners with the city. We like the results we get when we work together as a public-private partnership. Uh, we'd like the city to continue to be a partner in, in downtown revitalization and in business improvement.
So fifty thousand is specifically what you're talking about. Should you get it? Is your mark to do part of the funding, or is that, is that it?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Schurhoff?
Um, so it's along the same lines of what, what the mayor already mentioned, but, um, the district, uh, if I call it that, yeah, district, um, ninety-nine thousand dollars is about what it will bring in here. But I'm saying, the suspects are expected to double about ninety-nine thousand.
It's the economic improvement district.
Right.
Well, for instance, this year, we're, uh, billing for only, uh, three-quarters of a year, so it won't, won't bring in nearly that much. Uh, next year, different story. We won't know till this year, we'll see who actually pays their bills, how much that generates. It won't generate more than ninety, you know, the max. Like, we don't think it'll generate more than, in the ninety thousand dollar range. Uh, what we're asking the city for is the funding to, to do this extra programming. Uh, without it as a partner and some extra funding, we can't do the business improvement. We can't add to that thirty-six, uh, years to come, but that's really what we're seeking here.
So how, how much, um, so when the, when the district, um, shows into effect and finishes up the year, how much does that gonna bring?
I think this year, uh, the number's in the sixty thousand dollar range for the current calendar year, which is how the EID is set up to fund our, uh, downtown operations, uh, and the event production we do, the, um, grant writing, the M.A.S. media, the, you know, communications, uh, staffing. This is, the request is helping us do extra programming, program that brings, helps us invite new businesses downtown.
What was your, what was reminding me what the budget was for the whole of the year? I mean, fifty thousand, the fifty thousand dollars that the city contributed wasn't the whole...
What, what the EID?
No, 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 for Main Street. The Main Street program.
Uh, so before the EID was...
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we contributed, the city contributed fifteen, fifty thousand dollars to get started. That was, was that the entire, that wasn't the entire budget, was it?
Correct. It went out for grants, if, I mean, just...
Right, I mean, that was, um...
Right, Main Street, public-private partnership, so last year, the city had in fifty thousand dollars, same amount of funding we're asking for this year, to help, to fill, well, I'm getting your answer, to fill the third, the third year of the commitment to help get the downtown program up and running. That was M.A.S. against private funding, against grants, against, uh, in-time donations. So I don't have budget numbers in front of me.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, what, what portion did the city contribute in terms of the, in, in terms of a year in the budget? What is it, like half? Is it like?
No, I don't have numbers. You probably told me.
Well, yeah, I just know at least when...
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's less than half, it's more like, uh, one, uh, what is the number, listen, a, a third of our budget, and a third of our operations was covered by the city's support. The rest comes from our grant programming, our, our private contributions, things like that.
I'm just saying that, you know, the city put in fifty thousand dollars to really get this started. Um, it's now doing great. Um, now we have a district in place, which is now essentially making what we originally contributed and pretty much doubling it in a full year. So by putting another fifty thousand dollars, we're tripling it. We, we solve another problem in the city and move on with that. I mean, I think, so that's the question we really, we, we really wanna have a fine description of what this money is, to see if it's worth, if, you know, right now, our fifty thousand dollars is both then. Um, and, um, you know, we've basically doubled your money, because now you have a district that's gonna do that. Um, so why are we still putting fifty thousand dollars in?
The amount you're talking about is funding, uh, you know, it, administration, operations, events, things that will continue, certainly. But to actively go out and recruit new businesses on a higher level, there should be some funding for that.
Well, you have to, you're doubled. You just doubled it.
We haven't doubled, uh, in, the revenue or the income for the Main Street Oregon City entity has not doubled.
Well, we need to see the budget.
But I would suggest, but if I could make a suggestion, what you might do is outline, uh, the monies from last year before the EID, and how that budget was distributed, and indicate the additional activities and so forth that will be added, which includes, what type of grant monies, the EID plus the fifty thousand that you're requesting. So, uh, we get more of a specific idea of basically what, what the fifty thousand's gonna do differently, and some of it's gonna run differently. I think if we had a, uh, you know, last year's and, and this coming year's projection as to, uh, what was done with the fifty, and what difference is being done with the fifty, that'll probably, probably what, uh, think you think could help us.
Maybe I'm confused, but did we not address that? I, I mean, the, the money that's been contributed thus far has been helping us to fund operations. Now we found another way to do that.
Right.
So we're asking for this specifically for a project.
Well, we, I think we understand that. If, if you actually, if it was one year's comparison of use of funds, including the fifty, and the next year's with what's different, which is currently completely different than what the fifty thousand is now before hand.
Can, can Rashad, um, ask a question?
Yeah, she may.
Thank you. Um, uh, uh, Main Street's EID, um, billing was just picking up this month, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yeah.
So does that take a while for people to respond and give you, uh, their portion?
Absolutely.
So, does fifty thousand actually won't double or, um, do that until that has occurred? Is that correct?
Dan, you have to answer the question.
Yeah, we've probably collected about ten to fifteen percent so far, and...
Okay, so this is just like, um, going to help get through this year? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yes, um, it is. And, and again, this is the, it's, it's about three-quarters of the annual amount, because we're starting late. And all, all the, uh, bills I do at the end of May, actually, May thirty-first.
And next year's budget, we could look at that and, and, um, kind of figure out where we wanna go from that, would that help Commissioner Smith?
If we're putting the money into this year's budget, we need to see this year's budget.
Oh, yeah. And I'm sure that we can.
On next year's.
Well, the next year's and next year's projection. I mean, that's probably the before and after the EID.
But I mean, really, the, the thing is, I don't know what, we, we put in fifty thousand dollars to get it going. It's, I mean, it's, it's net, it's there, you know, it, it's great. Um, so, you know, other than just this, this is, um, a reminder of our Urban and Renewal Project meeting, just saying it out loud, this is the program, isn't enough. We need to see it on paper, um, let's see, um, where it's coming.
Where, where the fifty thousand dollars were going.
What were we getting extra, um, with this extra?
So, uh, a spreadsheet to show you how we take the money and put it toward a portion of print advertising, uh, TV advertising, uh, uh, coordination with associations. I don't want to sponsor it, because it's not events sponsorship, but you can, I can break it down.
That's, that's what I want you to do, is tell me why putting this fifty thousand dollars into Main Street, again, is better than tackling another project, like trying to solve the tourism problem, or trying to solve the next thing in Oregon City. Um, because there's all these little problems that we have to solve. And, and, in my mind, if we can throw fifty thousand dollars and, and do something as good as we did with Main Street somewhere else, then maybe we should do it. So you have to convince me that what you're doing with that fifty thousand dollars is better than any other project that we need help on right now, too.
I'm gonna raise a additional, I'm sure the fifty thousand dollars was part of the total revenue you got, and it may not have been earmarked specifically by activities. But it would help us to see what, what was done with the monies that you got last year, including our fifty thousand, and then show actually, uh, say this is something different that this, uh, this fifty thousand dollars you're requesting is something different than it was then last year. That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
It actually grabs outline how, how the funds last year were allocated, including the grant monies and whatever, right, in the broad picture. And then, your anticipated revenue.
Right.
What that's going to, and then the fifty thousand, what's that going to? I think it'll help us a lot.
We can, uh, you want it in print form, as opposed to showing the video and saying that's gonna become a, a marketing...
Right, right. We, we, yeah, the, the number.
Uh-huh.
I understand this, this, the fifty thousand's going to support this, and this is new. So look at what's happened in, last year, and what's happening this year. The additional money coming in from the EID plus the two thousand, or, or, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, um, next time you all invite us there, let us know what you want. That'll help. If you're trying to, if you're telling me your ones is budget numbers, uh, that would've been easy. Uh, I can, I can get that all to you. Okay, so...
Show a budget, and then you ask the money.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. The only thing, he could, he could email those to us.
He'll need to be outside.
Yeah, he could email those to us. And, uh, there may be a point of discussion of the budget, uh, budget discussion coming forward, but I presume you'll be here, or we'll have a chance to look at it before.
You need to be here. I, I was thinking this would be it, but if you need us there, we can feel for where we're heading. Here, I can give you some numbers, you.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I guess, Commissioner Smith.
Um, thank you both for coming, sorry, Lloyd. Um, I think that the word that Commissioner Smith was struggling for was priorities. And that what we're trying to, you know, determine when we do a, an annual budget is figuring out our priorities for spending. Um, um, Commissioner Smith mentioned, um, you know, that the tourism, um, issue that confronts us annually, um, perennially, actually. And, um, um, I think one of my issues right now, you know, when what's confronting us is the contingency that the closing of the mill has hit us with. And, yeah, budgeted some money for that, and, um, um, but we don't know what, what the... um, but we don't know what, what the agency is going to require as far as, um, addressing it. Um, one of the things we're grappling right now is, is, you know, visiting for the site to make sure we have one of the best kind of public access and public benefit and historical preservation and, and a number of questions concerning us on, on the mill site. Um, a neat thing that's percolating up from the grassroots is the idea of doing a community visiting process. Um, a lot of that, um, might come out of an urban renewal budget, um, but some of it certainly might come out of, um, um, uh, the city budget, you know, part for this, the mill site, since it lies for the most part outside the urban renewal district. Um, if you want to pursue that, I think might demand, um, some of the funding that, uh, we have available in the, in the city budget as, um, as opposed to the, uh, as opposed to the urban renewal budget. So it's, it's a lot of things, um, demanding our attention. Um, um, I think you guys have done a terrific, terrific job on a shoestring. It's just, um, everything that you guys have been lauded for, I think is highly deserved and, and I congratulate you on that. Um, I did, uh, since, you know, you guys and I have chatted about this, um, I want to, and I sent out an email about it this morning. I just wanted to bring up the, the little discussion document I sent out over email. And, um, a concern I have, um, that's a pretty longstanding concern that I, that I have over decades with being in re, urban redevelopment and public activism, uh, regarding, um, transparency and, and, um, um, urban redevelopment. Um, my concern, just because not everybody listening on, on TV or watching this on video has, has, um, heard my concern, but one of the things I have a concern about is, is, um, transparency because, um, Main Street Oregon City is the five one C three and technically is not subject to the Public Records Act. And it's, it's kind of an ambiguous situation where we get city money to a nonprofit that, um, does a significant planning function for downtown Oregon City and yet is not, um, um, subject to our public records laws. So I sent out an email today with, with three bulleted points about trying to get a discussion going about how I thought we might bring transparency to, to this process. And I said in the email that it would probably apply to, um, other entities that receive city money too. So this, I'm just kind of like launching this discussion now and, um, I'll be following up on it. But I made the suggestions about how we might bring, um, transparency where we, um, provide city money to a nonprofit. And I made three bulleted suggestions. One is to require the board of directors of Main Street to be elected by the property owners, business license owners, and perhaps registered voters within the Main Street boundary. Secondly, or alternatively, had the board be a mayoral-appointed city advisory committee analogous to the park recreation advisory committee, the transportation advisor committee, or others that are subject to public records laws and have the board members and main street manager use city provider email addresses. And thirdly was have the main street manager be a city employee as the main street manager and the city trustee as a city employee. So, um, just wanted to see if, um, any of these ideas present like deep-seated concerns to Main Street? And if so, what they are and, um, whether you might have, um, your own ideas on that transparency question that you might propose to us.
I can tell you I'm not prepared to address specific concerns here this evening, but the Main Street approach was developed by the National Trust. And this is a program that works in hundreds of cities all across the United States and works very well. Um, it works extremely well here. Um, as you mentioned, we've had tremendous success in the last two and a half years. Um, have received regional, state, and even national recognition for some of the work we're doing. That would be my, I guess, the way I look at that is we're, we're working within a program that was developed, um, by the National Trust, is proven, it's effective. Um, I would be hesitant to mess with that success. Um, beyond that, I, I'm not really prepared on this sort of certain notice to really delve into your questions on a, a deeper level.
I'll make a comment on one. And as has the board, um, mayoral-appointed, um, they're really, they're really, uh, responsible for their own budget and, uh, about the city. We do have one seat, uh, on, on our board. Uh, appointed Beth Roth with it because of her work considerations, traveling back and forth during the business hours. It didn't work out, and so I, uh, I've taken that seat. Um, so we do have a representative there. Um, um.
Well, a city staff person that also attends?
Yes, Dan, Dan attends those meetings. I don't know if he's an active member of the board, are you? No, he's not an active member of the board, but he does attend the meetings.
Okay.
And, uh, I guess, the first point, I, I mean, I think you've got, you've got people that are very committed to doing this and, uh, I, you know, you might have some degree of elected, um, representation in some form or another within the board, and I presume you can, you can do that in some form or another. Uh, but I, I don't think you should be mayoral-appointed, uh, advisory committee because it's only, it's only the advisory if we control the whole budget and I don't think the city should prefer that whole budget. And, uh, uh, city employee would really be problematic because the person would be responsible to us and then responsible for his own board. I, I think that'd be rather difficult. So maybe there's something.
That'd be a lot more than fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars, that's true too. But, uh, anyway, maybe, maybe not certain point, uh, whether it's in proportion and your membership to be elected from the property owners or the business owners.
It is, we talked. The board seats. Two board members come from property ownership, two from business owners, two from large employers. Someone from the arts community, how you decide to elect that, I don't know. Someone from the heritage and history community, somebody from.
Culture and tourism.
Culture and tourism.
At large.
At large, it's just a, a resident.
And a city commissioner.
So we have a fairly represent, I say a very representational board.
A representational board is different from an elected board.
That's, uh, yeah, the, each of those are, each of those candidates come forward from those communities and, you know, through the process for making sure we get good quality board members. There are also volunteers who do not just advise, but run programs for us. It's a little different. It's public-private partnership. It's different from a, a city, uh, commissioner. It's a different handle.
Would you have any, um, concerns about, um, a policy subjecting yourselves to the public record? As a matter of.
I, I will. None of them.
Well, if a citizen made a request to you, for example, as the executive director, then you would, the, the, the policy would bind you to provide the information unless one of the statutory exemptions in the public record.
Jim, I, that's more law than I, than I'm comfortable with right now. I don't know if I have to seek legal counsel to see if that is in the best interest of a public-private partnership.
Is there any argument over it? I know the city, sure, you're not speaking to the city manager.
Yeah, I'm a little sensitive, uh, and I have an understanding to look at, and we've suggested some substantial revisions, uh, to that. Um, it, of the three things that you have as the, the suggestions, um, the first one you can do legally, um, and you can figure out, um, an election mechanism. It may be costly, it may be cumbersome. It's really, it's a definite call for you folks to make as elected officials. And you hold the purse strings.
And I might, uh, sorry, quickly, no, that's fine. I just want to, before I go through the list, maybe I could suggest the least expensive alternative, which may be what Commissioner Mazzino was kind of getting to. Um, I, I think if the board at Main Street had adequate time to deliberate on this and consider the ramifications, they could, uh, as part of the EID, before we distribute funds to make sure our auditors have a record of that, we're requiring this MLU that I signed and their board approves. So, um, what we could do is ask them, ask them to consent to an open records requirement. Once they're familiar with what it requires, what it means, because it's going to increase, uh, a little bit of their record keeping. They're probably going to need to get some training that I hope we might be able to provide through our recorder's office. They'll have to have somebody to keep minutes, and of course, minutes, uh, minutes, contrary to what a lot of cities do, are not a transcript. Who showed up, what time they were there, what they voted on, and how they vote, and what time they adjourned. That's all it is. It's really pretty concise. Our neighborhood associations have been trained in this. So it wouldn't, it might, it sounds onerous, but there might be an easy way to get the things that people are concerned about and also make it workable for Main Street. I always like to have these kind of things be consensual. Uh, so if, if you'd like us to, the staff can work with the Main Street folks and see if, uh, through our city attorney's offices, if there's some, something there that they feel comfortable with, and then we can report back. But it's really up to the rest, the commission, how you all feel, because, uh, we haven't heard from all of you. Yeah.
Is there something that you have some other points?
You can require it because you hold the purse strings of the public records, public meetings law being here too, even if they're not subject to those.
This would apply to the EID as well.
Uh, it would apply to the, the city board if you wished it to. The EID is really a construct for a collection of funds. And then the third thing is really your call, whether or not you want the employees to be, employees of the city or, and you should organize it.
I think the second point for, for discussion is, 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 is what, um, the city managers suggest. So the commission is, um, interested. I'd love to propose that, uh, that the manager will, will put some issue on that.
This would take a while, but it, um, in terms of the budget, should we, uncut it to the contingent?
Well, I think we could make it, well, I think aside from the fifty, the fact that we have to adopt a budget that includes the money for the EID, we could make a contingent, EID money contingent on that.
Okay, thank you all.
Tom, do you have some of the city?
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Are, are you finished with that?
Uh, yes, the most, Tom, well, so Tom, I guess that's something that you want to respond to. Uh, Tom, Tom, are you directing this to this topic? Come on up.
Tom McRaven, Oregon City. I must admit that I found the video very entertaining. But then I think fifty thousand dollars can provide a lot of entertainment. I would offer a alternate proposal that probably could occur for about ten percent of fifty thousand dollars. And yet would help the Main Street EID as well as the city as a whole. You have in the Main Street area, many unsightly, ugly, illegal signs. And I think for probably five thousand dollars, we could remove those and dramatically improve the appearance, making it certainly very attractive to potential people who might like to invest or put businesses in that area. So I would ask you to consider perhaps spending the money a little bit more wisely and yet at the same time achieving some of the stated goals that have been brought before you. Thank you.
All right, that, uh, here's to bringing us some, nothing more coming before us.
I meant to put the.
This is nothing, right?
There's not nothing. What is? I think there's minutes in there.
Yeah.
And.
No.
Oh. Okay.
So we, we go.
Yes.
And, uh, second by Commissioner Ross. We'll get, we'll give everybody a chance just to work quickly to see if we've got positive work.
Um, typically when we have a consent agenda, at least we've had several days to look what's on the consent agenda. Um, and these are just being handed to us at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, and I have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It didn't get on the, it didn't, you know, get a screen here, but they were on. So this is what was on. The ones on screen, buddy. Do you take it up?
Commissioner Mom. Commissioner Ross.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Mazzino.
Aye.
Mayor Mary.
Aye.
Motion passes, five year old.
Thank you so much. Is that city manager ready for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just two things, three things this evening. Uh, first, uh, the Willamette Falls Media Center, uh, report, the draft is finished. I haven't read it yet. Uh, I don't even, uh, I have it on my desk. Came in late this afternoon, haven't read it yet, but, um, we're going to take a look at that tomorrow. Uh, Westland, as you may or may not know, passed their ordinance by unanimous vote to uh, create a municipal oversight committee consisting of their city manager and our city manager, if we chose to, um, pass a similar ordinance. That ordinance would be on your June first calendar for your agenda and, um, uh, how do I say this? I think it's your decision whether or not you would want to take that up and do the first and second reading in one meeting. Uh, and you may want to consider that only because, uh, Westland is pretty far ahead of us as far as the timing. And, uh, on the other hand, you may, you may want to wait for thirty days. That's really your option, but I just wanted to remind you that that's a possibility. Um, let me see. Are there any questions about that, by the way?
I have a question.
Okay, I'll, I'll take, so, so it was the Connor I first, so take that, the Ross, then the, the commissioner, uh, Commissioner, uh, getting on.
My question is just kind of in relation to where are we in the audit because I'm. We have the.
The audit is, is completed. I've got the report like four thirty this afternoon and I have not read it. Um, now, as a standard practice, um, what ordinarily happens when you receive an audit is the, um, the people that have been the subject of the audit have a chance to respond first. And so our staff are meeting with some the, those employees tomorrow so that they can respond to the, any of the audits. In case the, in case the auditor missed something, there could be a receipt somewhere that they weren't, they didn't see. The management should always have an opportunity to provide an explanation. And so they're going to be given that opportunity before anything is released. Um, and again, I haven't read it yet, but that's on my reading list for tomorrow.
So we should have this by the end of the week?
I suspect we will unless there's some research or some, some file they need to retrieve over there to try to find, uh, the, the rest of the information. I believe there, there probably, what we're going to see is that there are some receipts that, um, just weren't there for some of the transactions. But, um, I don't know any more than that because I haven't read the report yet. Um, but we'll be bringing that information to you as, as it comes in.
Commissioner Mom has a question.
Yes.
We don't have that one. Can I have my one, five, four?
Oh, I hate to sound like a broken record, but for a year I've been saying, you know, I've managed a, an airport, I've managed a city harbor, I've managed a swimming pool, a golf course, a bowling alley, I can keep going, a rodeo arena of all things. I've never managed a TV station. I don't want to manage a TV station, uh, but there may be. I want to, um, I think Westland's ordinance that they're proposing essentially keeps the CCAB intact, but it, it limits the, the manager aerial. but it limits the manager aerial oversight, the day-to-day operational oversight, and puts that more squarely on the responsibilities of the cities, particularly on the finance side. And that structure may, may be a workable thing. It's still not something I'm looking forward to doing because I've got plenty to do already. And hopefully, if I, if we do do that, it could lead to something where, where the cities don't have to be in that situation. My preference has always been that we simply write a subscription to a service provider, and that's all I need to do, because that's just the simplest thing for the city. But we're not quite there yet, so we may have to be in this business for a little while before we get there.
What if we choose not to? What's going to happen to the decision? What if the city chooses to not open the IGA until 2012?
Well, the IGA cannot be amended unless both cities agree to it. And so if West.
Westland made their decision. What if we choose not to follow their?
Yes, I'm getting to that. So after, since they've already made their decision to amend the EID, or the, the IGA, sorry. The City Board and City Commission decides not to go along with that, then the IGA is not amended. And at that point, then Westland has, has only really one, one or maybe only one more option, which would be to withdraw from the IGA altogether, which then nullifies and cancels the IGA. You no longer have one. The assets would be split up between the cities and the corporation would be dissolved. So that's, you know, kind of a, I guess if you want to know what the end game is, I'm trying to answer your question, Commissioner Ramon. Does that do that for you?
That's good.
Okay.
I think we'll have more conversation to come.
Yeah.
I've heard questions of the same.
Okay.
Thank you, go on. The passing ordinance effectively is, it becomes amended to the IGA, is that right?
You would amend the IGA by the ordinance, and you also have to consider whether or not you want emergency plans.
I'm going to assume that if you're dealing mostly with the financial matters, something really perhaps needs to be resolved, who takes a look at those financial matters? I, would there be somebody's finance pressure at one of the institutions or something like that? I'm not, if you're looking primarily at financial issues or taking a look.
Well, it's probably going to be, I mean, honestly, their ordinance is pretty broad based, and when it says the day-to-day affairs will be managed by the city managers as a committee, that's pretty broad. So what the managers could do, and probably what I would encourage myself and my colleagues to do, would be look at things like the, for example, I mean, the things that come to my mind are financial management, budgeting, review perhaps of the contracts that the other providers, you know, my fellow city managers are getting a killer deal here. So I might want to talk to them about how they can pay a little bit more so we can pay a little bit less. So the contract review, the financial management, those are some of the things that, that I'm most interested in because I think those are the things where the cities can be the most helpful. Other things like studio hours, programming, facility use policies, citizen involvement, web maintenance, their agendas, things like that. I really don't think there's any reason that the cities, those, those things don't seem to be broken in any way, so I'm not sure why we would want to tinker around that. So if you pass this ordinance and it's the same or similar to the one that Westland did and IGA is amended, the managers will get together and try to decide how best to manage this with the least impact on the organization. So you ready for me to move on?
Okay.
So the next thing I want to report on is this week I went to the Tri-City Advisory Committee meeting, which included a review of the budget for the Tri-City Sewer District. I'm still trying to figure out why I was there because I wasn't asked to vote on a budget or make a recommendation, but I was told that they were giving us, quote, "the first crack at the budget," unquote. Well, my crack included a concern about an eight point one percent increase in sewer rates this year. I do think they have to do some sort of increase because we have a consolidation with Clackamas Sewer District Number One, and that did require us to make some bigger investments upfront to consolidate that hopefully the ratepayers in our city will benefit from in a few years. And what they're telling me is that this year and next year, they expect rate increases around eight percent. This year is eight point one. And what I have said to them is that I believe our city and our commissioners, and I don't like to desert you folks very much, but I did this time, if you'll forgive me. I said, "I think our community and our commissioners would be more comfortable with those kinds of increases if they knew what the progression to increases were beyond that." In other words, are they going to, because in my view, in this particular climate we're in, anytime a fee rises much above inflation, we have to be asking ourselves, "How necessary is that?" And again, they made commitments long ago that led to some of these increases. Apparently, through years, they didn't even have inflationary increases, and they were kind of hit and miss. And you folks have lived through that with your own utility systems, where a commission would go for a decade or two without touching the rates because nobody wanted to do it, and then somebody had to make a thirty percent hike. Well, there was some of that, some of that. I don't think it was that extreme, but I think some of that led to the reason why they need these larger increases right now. But the other thing that concerns me is that, that I raised this in the meeting as well. They have a line item in there for a capital purchase of five hundred thousand dollars for a piece of land that is currently owned, I believe, by Lewis and Clark Bank. It's, the bank bought it to open a branch. It's immediately adjacent to the sewer campus, I was what a campus. And so when I saw this capital purchase on there, I thought to myself, wouldn't it be maybe a better thing to do because, because it was portrayed to us for odor control? And frankly, between the cove and the rivers and all the other interesting things that have happened in our community, I've been down there a lot, and I'm not, I've not noticed that problem. I actually, and I've talked to some of our staff, and I don't, I just don't really think there's an odor problem down there right now. And I think if there was, the bank wouldn't be thinking of opening a branch there unless they were going to have a really high-speed drive-through. So I, I just have some doubts about whether that is really necessary. And so one of the things I have suggested to them is that, "Why don't you take that five hundred thousand that you were going to use to buy land to take off our tax rolls, which I know we're all concerned about? Take that five hundred thousand that you were going to do to take, and leave the land on the tax rolls for the city of Oregon City, and take that and mitigate that rate increase." Now, I don't know how much mitigation that would, would affect, because I haven't processed those numbers, but if they even brought it down two percent, that would, that would be helpful. Now, as an advisory committee, I'm assuming that our advice is supposed to be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. And sometimes my best way to communicate with them is through you folks. So I will be sending you updated emails about this, and I'll give you all the information that I have, a string of emails so that you can see what we're, what we're dealing with. But I, I do believe that a rate increase that's three or four times inflation, and while you're buying property and taking it off the tax rolls, is contrary to our best interest. And I don't know how to say that any stronger, but you'll see in the emails that I made the case. And you may be in a position where you need to communicate with your accounting officials on that.
Yeah. Commissioner Smith may recall this discussion.
Certainly will.
It was one of the big things that we confronted as newly elected commissioners. At the time, this Weight Water Treatment Partnership thing was put forward. We voted against that, and the big reason I voted against that was because we thought it was a stalking horse for the county to wind up consolidating CCSD Number One in Tri-City. And the concern in the community was that because the county wanted to foster growth out in the county, and Oregon City and Tri-City was a pretty stable, you know, wastewater partnership between Gladstone, Oregon City, and Westland, our rates were stable and that we were afraid of what was going to be called the parity process, whereby through this consolidation, all the problems of CCSD Number One would be foisted onto the Tri-City ratepayers through rate increases. And I think we're seeing the.
Start.
The, the realization of this nightmare. Now, at the time, we raised the idea, and I think the city attorney may recall this discussion, about whether Tri-City could succeed and form something that's similar to the South Fork Water Board.
And, and, Mr. Macedo, you've also mentioned a couple of times, other commissioners have too as well, that wouldn't it be appropriate to have representative elected officials from each of the cities?
Be the governing board.
Well, they're not on purpose.
Yeah, and, and I think you even asked the city attorney about this, and what you said it was possible, but.
It's, there are several things involved. First of all, it's the county services district, where the cities originally voluntarily went in, that's several commissions ago, and before I got it. It's been five years. It's a similar process that occurred in Washington County to form what's now Clean Water Services, Unified Surge Agency. And I believe it was just, the legislation was adopted just before I became a lawyer in nineteen sixty-nine. But I think the purpose of it was, once you decide to get in, it's going to be real hard to get out. So I said, "Yes, it's possible, and you might be able to do something," but I think I suggested that you may want to look at legislation to make it clear. There's another issue, and that is bonding and other financial commitments.
And I think that was your focus when we asked you about it. And what was, remember the focus of the question?
First of all, is all those treatment facilities, who owns them? And you have to buy your own facilities, you know, if this thing collapses. And how is it going to be a cause for that purpose? What are you doing with bonded indebtedness? So those are the things that bothered me, and it was a long res discussion.
I'd also make a point. When we gave the Urban Law Commission a good chunk of the property that, that they, they come. And that, that meant their long-term development at this.
I, I'm so glad you brought that up, Mayor, because.
And now they're asking for additional land, which they probably do not need.
Well, that, it sure wasn't proven to me because all it was is odor, odor control. And when I pushed back on them about that, I was told, "Well, that's just a placeholder in case we can get the bank to sell." I still thought that if I can go back and you, you all can probably help me on this one. My first few months here on the job, Alice North told me one time when we were discussing this, she told me that her memory of this was that they were insured, you were insured, the city was insured, that when they situated this campus as they did, that it would meet their long-term needs, and that they would not be expanding, and that the reason that they wouldn't be expanding their geographic footprint is for two reasons. Number one, they had improved technology, and the technology was smaller in scale and took up less space, and that if they needed to add capacity, they would be vertical instead of this way. And I, I would like to know if that's true because that's not something anybody seems to remember who's in that room with me talking about this, but, so, yes.
If I wasn't so exhausted right now, I would flip out. This is unbelievable.
Can I make a suggestion to you?
We need to have some sort of a work session or something. They're taking advantage of the fact that you don't know the history here. And.
Well, I bring Nancy with me, and we together.
I know, but.
But we want to see the face, Rob, that they shouldn't be doing this. And I've been sending them emails all day saying, "I don't think they should be doing this."
Staff and the past commissioners are responsible for this, including our current mayor. So we need to figure this out. This is.
Yeah, I want to make this, I want to make a suggestion to you, a way to approach this, because I'm going to keep pushing on them, and I'm probably going to start sharing my emails with you folks that I've had with their staff so that you can see what the arguments I'm making and whether or not you agree with them. You're probably going to think of many more. I've heard some tonight from Jim mostly in your initial review of this. So let me suggest to you this. The governing board of this operation is the county commissioners. And I think some of you are very well-equipped to write very legitimate letters and contact them and let them know how you, how you feel, because when I left there, I said, "Well, if we're advisory committee, I'm giving you my input. How do I know that input, where does that input go?" And Mike Kinsey said, "Well, we're going to leave all these things in the budget and just take it to the commission." And I thought to myself, "Well, what about our recommendation?" And, "Well, you're not required to make one." But I'd like to make one. Well, but it's political at this point.
You need to know that you need to find out all the hesitation. We have kind of serious workstations to get over.
I'm going to, I'm going to make a suggestion right quickly, and then I'll open it up. Where, where is Ted Kyle from ever, you know?
City of Ohio.
Did you, may I make a suggestion that you contact Ted Kyle? When that property was procured from the Urban Renewal Agency, I forget what it was, I want to say two hundred thousand dollars. They had an option. They bought the property, which is part of that landfill, but their extension. He was, find out what his recollection was of the understanding in terms of long-term use of that property, in terms of providing services. And it did include more, you know, it did include more county use of the, of the, developing their facilities there. And Ted, Ted Kyle's got that institutional memory from that period of time.
Eric, if, oh, that's fine. Nancy can do that. The other thing we can do is, is I can ask the city recorder to look at some of, do some, a little bit of research to see if we can find documentation as well, because chances are there's phrases, discussions like that, commitments, promises that might have been made. But I don't know how to get around this other than, I mean, I was so frustrated by this my first two months here when I encountered a service provider, and then I would call the county administrator's office and find out that it was basically, you know, that's the way it is. I've never, never known a city that exists to serve a service provider. I know utilities that exist to serve cities. And I was really taken aback because I've never, in my whole career, encountered anything quite like this, where it's that hard. You remember the conflict we had about the sewer pipe on the pedestrian bridge? I worked on that for eight hours. Now, if my city public works director was recording to me, how long, how many hours do you think I'd work on that? About five minutes. So any time you sort of surrender, and thank goodness you didn't surrender your delivery system, but you did surrender a plant, and, and any time you give up your right to control a utility plant, you really complicate things for yourself operationally. You can partnership, but you shouldn't give up, this is sort of almost like your sovereignty, you know? It's like your, your ability to really manage your city. And it's, it very much hinges now on a strong relationship between you and the county commissioners. And that's unfortunate because it's kind of a shifting.
Yes, shifting sands. I'm going to propose something because this isn't, I think we've met, we've talked about this recently, and I, and I think this is another time to raise the idea. Tri-City is not the only issue where we have issues with the county.
Right.
There's all these, you know, potential use of county property for some of our facilities is another issue.
Right.
A lot of, you know, county-owned land that doesn't generate taxes is another one.
Right.
We, I think, talked about a summit of sorts, one-on-one to five-on, five-on-five. Once they see the new commissioner, I think we should invite the whole board to sit down in one room and, and.
We're, it's your choice to do that.
You know, put everything on the table.
Can you see it there?
We're ready for you. I don't think it's too early, though, to make a few calls to those folks. And then I, I have already talked to the county administrator about setting up this joint meeting, this workshop, work session, because I know we have at least two. I think it was Commissioner Roth that brought up the payment of the taxes for the property that's displaced. And, you know, instead of the problem staying the same so we can face it and deal with it, you probably saw my comments in the newspaper a few weeks ago, and Commissioner Bernard was saying, "Well, they're not, you know, we contribute all these jobs." That doesn't come close to the amount it costs us to provide services to all the people that come here. Doesn't even come close. And I mean, they do have facilities in other cities around the county. They don't have other county seats where they have such an enormous presence. And so I think, I'm, I'm looking forward to this discussion because I think we need to have it.
When is, when is the county going to see the budget?
Well, that's what I want to, that's why I'm telling you folks now, because I believe what I was there for, I got the feeling, was just so somebody could say, "We met with the Tri-City Advisory Committee." Check that box. We met with the Citizen Budget Committee. Check that box. Board of County Commissioners, "Serves the budget we recommend." And the commissioners say, "Well, have you met with all these people?" Uh-huh. And not, "Have you met with all these people?" And how happy are they about the eight point one? And did the city manager from some, some place have a complaint about any of this? Well, and because I can't tell you what happens with this thing, and I feel like I have almost no influence, I'm suggesting to you. have almost no influence, I'm suggesting to you that you contact your county elected officials and let them know your concerns, and ask them reconsider this, particularly taking this property off the tax rolls, and purchasing something like that that's completely optional, when they don't need to expand the footprint, and your history that you know about this, I think is very important for you to share that.
Yeah, I would, I'm presuming it's talking to the other city manager, Tri-City.
Yes.
Okay.
Talked to, talked to Chris Jordan this afternoon, asked him to look at my email. Now, see, the other thing about these, these, this whole trifecta, is because we are the host city, when you take a $500,000 piece of property off the tax rolls here, it doesn't affect Gladstone and Westland. So they might be sitting back going, I don't know, it's not real, or if I, should we get involved? I mean, they've been very supportive, and they're great, the two managers are fantastic to work with for me, but it's harder to raise the passion of a community when it's not really there. And so this is almost like divide and conquer in some sense, because the cities are all a little bit different, their values are a little, quite a bit different, and, and so it's hard sometimes to rally everybody around, but I think if you are going to challenge the way this thing's constructed, then at some point you would want to insist, I think, board representation. I just don't understand, frankly, how the Board of County Commissioners cannot have elected officials from each of the three cities on this thing.
They don't have one, that was the whole point.
Okay, yeah.
Well, they didn't agree with what they want to do, they took, I mean, that's the whole point.
And that's, that's the thing.
They improved this, and improved this.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm glad I'm here to advise you on that, because I would have given you a probably...
A re-elected new mayor, you made that decision. Well, I'm, I was there.
Well, we have to fix it.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my goodness. Did Jeff come to you?
He did.
Commissioner, I, yeah, I wanted to ask.
No, I didn't ask.
Short of, for that recent session, where it seems like a lot of hurdles might be insurmountable, is there, is there any way from a legislative or legal standpoint of leveraging those three elected, or that elected official representation on this place?
Certainly legislatively. I mean, you've got a short session next, in two thousand twelve, and you've got two thousand thirteen's regular session. If, if you would have asked, I could have gotten something together, you know, for this, this session, but it's almost over. So, and then legally, what I can say is a variation of what Commissioner Smith said, they meant to do it. The legislature meant to do this in sixty-nine to solve a Washington County problem of a series of, of cities and special service districts that didn't want to be a part of a county service district. DEQ imposed a moratorium, they all went in and knew that they would never come out, that the district would be dissolved, the cities would give over their surge functions to the, to the new agency. The intention was not to be able to have it once again. That's why Hillsborough didn't get in. And, and there is a way to get out of it, right, Ed?
No, I don't think so.
No, I mean, there's a way to get out of it, if, if you're willing to build a sewer plant. That's a pretty expensive exit.
I don't want to live away.
I mean, isn't it one of the space options?
To deal with that, of course. How you're, get those substitute facilities in place?
Yeah. Stick away. I'm posting. So, again, you know, make your votes assertive, is all I can suggest to you. I will go ahead, you might want to wait till I send you those emails, because I was going to give you a, a more of a written report on what I saw there, and I had a feeling, let me ask you this, do any of you remember thinking that rates were going to stay fairly low, and then that there were going to be these larger increases? Do, do, do any of you remember that? Because one of the things I said again, and my connection is very good.
It wasn't mentioned, but everybody knew that's what was going to happen.
Well?
Especially parity came at a different time, but I don't even know what parity means.
Well, this year, I think it means 8.1%.
It means that we're all paying the same, and we're basically subsidizing the rest of the county.
Well, then, in the rate increase, what's projected CCSD number one rate?
Uh, do you remember the projected CCSD number one increase?
I don't think that that was part of the presentation, because we weren't looking at their budget. Part of this rate increase is to make up for the loss of revenues from the, the fee that CCSD was paying as for the, while they were, while they were paying, while they were sending us their, their, their way, they're paying sort of a surcharge to use the Tri-City plant, and since they've got their own facility there, they, they don't receive that revenue anymore. So that's one of the reasons why they're trying to make up that revenue loss.
Let me, let me, just here's another issue. Is there any, any leverage that we can play back to get them to the table? And I'll give one example, last week, or on Monday, this Monday or last Monday, there was the planning commission meeting, where their land use for that pipe over the bridge was approved. We have a hope to, or a 227 commission call power. We could do that, and see if there's a hope in there, we could leverage something to get them to the table. I'm seeing a very skeptical agreement.
I guess I would have preferred me to talk about it. I didn't mean for this to get as far as it did, but I want to let you know that I'll be sending you my string of emails, that you can see my analysis, add to it as you will, and...
I look forward to seeing your emails, David.
And reach out to your county commissioners and tell them what your thoughts are, tell them your concerns. I mean, I...
Yep.
I, I'm...
I think we got it already. They didn't listen, and they don't listen, that's all it is.
It's a different group now, so they might...
Well, it's, it's something.
I can guarantee you that her, her facility director doesn't listen to me, I can, I can tell you that. I mean, he probably heard me, but...
And the media.
No, no, that was pretty clear, actually. Okay, so we have one last thing on my reports, and that is Nancy Kay's going to give you a short update on the tree, street tree policy that they're working on.
I'll just do it, just a quick introduction, and then perhaps, I think that Tony has a few more details. In response to a petition that was submitted to us through the South End and Westland Farm Neighborhood Associations, we thought, their concern is with the buckling of sidewalks on the street trees in their neighborhoods, and their concern is that they feel like it's really, shouldn't be necessarily their responsibility to repair these, even though our code, where the, the property owner repairs sidewalks and their damage by street trees. Anyway, so it's, it's pretty complicated. We were asked to also go speak at the Coffield Association of Neighbors, and what we decided to do is, because it actually involves three departments in the city, one is code enforcement, one is the Planning Division, or Community Development, and one is Public Works, we usually write our permits. We thought the first thing that would be helpful to do is just to clarify, what is their current code, what is, what are the rules that exist today in Orion City? And then we would put them together in a PowerPoint presentation, so first of all, I think it's important to explain to people, well, these are what the rules are for everybody in the city, and then, from there, then we can take it from, well, what's, what should be thinking about fixing if those rules aren't to everybody's liking. So I, Pete Walter from Community Development is preparing a presentation, then that we can take around to the CIC, and to the Neighborhood Associations, and then get feedback, and I'm sure the city commission will be involved at some point with that. But meantime, Tony, did you want to present any of, any of Pete's details tonight, or...
I'll, I'll just, I'll just keep it brief. We're, we're looking at our, you know, multiple options, what we can do to try and reduce some of the financial impact of replacing both types of sidewalks that are destroyed, whether that be other materials that we can use, ways to reduce sidewalk width, so we're putting together a comprehensive list of options that then we'll be able to bring back to the, to the Neighborhood Associations as options to try and address some of the concerns.
And then to perhaps put some people's minds at more ease, even though the people that have homes that were built in a certain timeframe, other than the really old homes, with really old sidewalks and big huge trees, but there are a lot of changes that have been already made in our code that will hopefully prevent future areas having to go through the same kind of damages that, that these folks are seeing in the South End and West End. Well, I think it kind of depends, I'll do the, Ed always says, it depends on what, how much damage there is, but it...
It's a million dollars.
Yeah.
One of the complaints I heard, if I'm not mistaken, was that we had goals in place in terms of what kinds of trees could be planted there that shouldn't cause the sidewalk damage at dinner, for some of these, for some of these neighborhoods.
Well, but, but...
They were not planted in a proper depth to...
I see.
There were no, there were no instructions to the developer on how.
I see.
Right.
I think that one of the issues that you see is that we've, when we introduced planter strips, they were, they were small, and as we've progressed, we've continually enlarged those planter strips. And then we also didn't have a, a street tree list until two thousand four. So what you see in these older subdivisions are subsided or smaller planter strips, with trees put in there, picked by the developer. You know, moving forward, we're expecting to see less of this, as we have appropriated trees for the planter strip size, and then we continue to, you know, and the, another discussion through the transportation system plan update is, are we going to go with bigger planter strips yet? You know, that's something that we're going to be reviewing and, and making a recommendation on as we go through this process. So, but yes, we do have a, a pre-existing condition that was due to, you know, the standards that were in place in time, and it was unforeseen, this is what happens, and now we're trying to correct that through these alternative options.
And I might add that this is not unique to Oregon City, there are many other cities in the Portland metro area, but the same age range, the eighties, nineties developments, neighborhoods are experiencing the same problems, and, and different municipalities are addressing it in different ways, too.
And, and really, where you see this coming from, this isn't Oregon City just decided to say we want all the sidewalks fixed, you know, this became, this came out of the American with Disabilities Act for accessibility, and you have a one-quarter inch is the standard. If a sidewalk splits, cracks more than a quarter inch, it's, it's a hazard per the federal standard. So this isn't just something that Oregon City decided to put in, we are complying with requirements that, that we have to meet.
It's what we city managers call unfounded mandates.
Yeah, and we also do not actively go out and pursue code enforcement on these situations, we do respond to complaints from others.
Good.
We couldn't, we don't have resources, you know, and you'll have reduced rates, and you'll, you'll get all this information in the PowerPoint eventually, but we also have reduced speed for the right-of-way permits to do the sidewalk work. We recognize right away that it would be very helpful if we gave a reduced rate on that permit fee.
All right, some to talk, you know, a lot of property owners that are not in a position to repair the sidewalks financially.
Yeah, I won't go for now.
And so, bye then.
Bye.
Anyway, that, be they the funds that come back from the interest payments south of the, to our South Fork, so that we could say, okay, you pay, you pay upfront 25% of the cost, and you take a loan from the city, which would be a small interest loan, to do the rest over, of it, pay the, pay the period over a four-year period, or something of that, where we get reimbursed, they have money available to them at a low interest rate to do so. It might be something to consider.
Sure, that's another option. But what we really thought was important to do first is to make it really clear what is, what's existing.
Yeah.
And then we can talk about what parts of that existing needs modifications, how we're going to fund it. Yeah, I think that's a really good point, to show there's some improvement, even though that it wasn't back then.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
And don't forget, there's a new executive session.
Executive session after this, because we talked all, till seven o'clock?
Good. I'll make my, my report brief. I'm appointing Derek Manson to the Historic Review Board, he's taken over the architect position, specifically the time architect position. I did not have a chance to interview him, but the board looked at his qualifications, we were very happy with him, so that appointment is being made, please expect him now. And I'll be, if we need, along with the executive session. Any others?
I was going to report that I attended the grand opening of the Grand Grand, new office building in Portland on Barbara Boulevard, and Earl Blumenauer, who I didn't recognize, he didn't have a bow tie.
How did I, how did I miss you? If I was sitting next to her, to her, uh...
Did you recognize it?
I, I did not recognize, because he was in the booth, no.
I was here. Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, I was there.
I was in the council room.
Oh, okay, I was sitting in the...
Pioneer Family Festival starts Friday, it goes through Sunday, and...
Guess what, Ricky, it's Friday.
I'm, I'm still going to go down to the park tonight. I haven't even been down there to see the layout of what's going on in the park all night, and everything's, you know, since I haven't been able to control what's going on down there, I have some major things I have to deal with tonight, tomorrow morning, before we start setting up, but I'm exhausted, and, but I hope that everyone in the city comes down and enjoys the amount of work that I've put in, and, and a lot of other optimist members, and people throughout the community, and I hope I survive it. I always do, and it should be a good weekend.
We'll be able to see better tomorrow, 5:30 AM, morning.
I know. I probably won't sleep, I'll probably be down there all night.
Anything else with your other, and if you're ready, I'm going to executive...